Good evening, I'm calling the Board of Education Regular Meeting to order. Sorry that we are late. We have nothing to report yet from closed session. Our first item on the agenda is adoption and approval of the agenda.
I move to approve and adopt or adopt and approve the agenda.
Second. Do I have a second? Did I?
Sheldon.
Sheldon's nodding, okay. All in favor? I opposed, alright. Special recognitions and reports, Students of the Month for December. And Ashley, I'm gonna call these in the order they're on the agenda, okay? So the first group is Kennelworth Junior High School. Are we there?
I think we've now got everybody in.
Cool.
Hello, I'm Lucy James, and I am presenting Kaitlyn Howard as Student of the Month. Kaitlyn was chosen Student of the Month because she is one of Kennelworth's brightest academic stars and one of our most outstanding citizens. Kaitlyn has maintained a 4.0 grade average in her entire time at Kennelworth in a schedule that includes a zero period, advanced English, accelerated math, symphonic band, and Kennelworth Television. More impressive yet, Kaitlyn is currently earning A+ in all seven of her classes. Considens, talented, hardworking, and bright are just a few of the superlatives used by Kaitlyn's teachers to describe her. Ms. Hopkins, Kaitlyn's band teacher, shared, "Kaitlyn is a very bright and talented young musician. Kaitlyn is a stellar saxophone player. She works hard at everything she does, and you can always count on Kaitlyn to put a smile on your face." Ms. Manera, Kaitlyn's math teacher, has also been impressed by Kaitlyn. "Kaitlyn puts a great deal of effort into each assignment to make sure each problem is written up precisely, accurately, and accurately. Kaitlyn is an excellent math student. Kaitlyn Howard is more deserving of this award enthusiastically adds Ms. Romano, Kaitlyn's history teacher last year. Kaitlyn puts forth her full effort on every assignment that she works on. Whether it's worth 1 point or 100 points, Kaitlyn is kind and also very sweet. Her smile lit up my room. Her skills, study habits, and attitude are top-notch. Success is important to Kaitlyn, but even more important to her is doing right and doing it well. Not only is Kaitlyn outstanding, and then not only is Kaitlyn an outstanding student, but she is equally successful and busy outside of school. Kaitlyn has already earned a black belt in taekwondo, plays competitive soccer, and manages Kaitlyn's crafty shop, a successful Etsy store where she sells her customized Starbucks cups. Kennelworth is proud to have Kaitlyn as a student, and we look forward to watching Kaitlyn's future successes. Congratulations, Kaitlyn."
Thank you. Is there another student from north?
I am presenting Student of the Month for Srihan Goli. Srihan was chosen Student of the Month because he is one of Kennelworth's most outstanding, positive, and well-rounded students. Srihan has maintained a 4.0 grade point average while taking one of the most academically rigorous schedules of classes offered at Kennelworth. Not only is Srihan excelling in our accelerated math program and in his advanced English class, but he is also a talented member of our symphonic and important contributor to our Kennelworth Television Broadcasting Class. Ms. Hopkins, Srihan's band teacher, shared, "Srihan is a wonderful tuba and drum set player. Srihan is such a awesome team player, and he is always willing to help his fellow musicians if that are struggling with the musical concept." Mr. Russo, Srihan's PE teacher for two years, enthusiastically says, "Srihan is one of the most hard-working, nicest, and most productive students I have ever had. Everything he does is top-notch physically and academically." Top student in my class. He is always positive and smiling, and he is always willing to participate by offering his thoughts or sharing his work. Srihan is a joy to have in class. When Srihan is not in school, he enjoys playing video games, riding his bike, and has even competed and judged Rubik's Cube competitions. After high school, Srihan would like to attend either UC Berkeley or UCLA and possibly possibly pursue a career in media production. Wherever Srihan lands, we know he has a bright future ahead of him. All of us at Kennelworth are very proud of him. Congratulations, Srihan.
Thank you, Kennelworth. Now we will hear from Pedalina Junior High School.
Thank everyone from Pedalina Juniors in. Whoever is going to present, go for it.
Um, hi, yeah. I'll be presenting for both of the students for Pedalina Junior High. We are so pleased to present Daphne Garcia Gonzalez as one of our December 2020 Students of the Month. She was born on April 14th, 2006, right here in Pedalina. She brings a wonderful presence to our school and the volleyball court. As a native Spanish speaker, Daphne has worked hard to adapt in school and has become an academic and personal role model. Daphne is not afraid of challenge. She's an extremely hard worker and always gives 100% to school in her assignments. Last year, Daphne earned the principal's award for outstanding effort and best attitude. Her goal is to continue earning good grades and to keep going to and to keep going forward no matter what. Sorry. Her goal is to continue to earn new grades and to keep going no matter what. Daphne's teachers applaud her fortitude. Her science teacher says, "Great student. Daphne stays on top of all her work, participates in class, always works hard, and excels." Her PE teacher adds, "Daphne is a respectful, hardworking student who always gives a strong effort in class. Volleyball is one of Daphne's primary pleasures in life. She had been playing since 2nd grade or 3rd grade at Cinnabar and was on the PGHS team last year. Daphne loves the teamwork and the excitement of the competition, and she appropriately uses her sport as a way of managing stress. She also has done cheerleading. In addition, Daphne likes to walk with her dogs, listen to music, and spend time with her friends and family." From other ads, translated and paraphrased from Spanish, "How quickly the time has passed. It seems like just yesterday you were crawling. Now you are running. You are an unstoppable young woman who pursues all of her dreams. Dear daughter, I know you have been through a lot of difficult times and that you have your dreams still lift you up to. You have the strength that you need to get what you want. Show your best self to the world, and all will be yours. You have been my guide to finding a safe path, my best friend, my biggest accomplishment in the light of my life. I'm so proud of you. Your grades show that you are a good student, that you are responsible, and that you have perseverance to achieve your goals. Congratulations. I love you, and I'm very proud of you." We feel fortunate to have Daphne Garcia Gonzalez be part of Pedalina Junior High and to present this caring and hardworking young woman to the board as Student of the Month for December 2020.
Thank you.
Okay. We are honored to present Alan Hall-Blean as one of our December 2020 Students of the Month. Alan was born in San Francisco on July 24th, 2006. He has been with our district for most of his schooling so far. Through hard work and dedication, he proved to be an excellent student and a fine athlete. He's an excellent role model for Pedalina Junior High in this community. Alan enjoys school and work hard. This year, he is earning straight A's and continues to thrive through the distance learning model. His math teacher comments, "Alan is a dedicated student who is willing to expand extra effort to make sure he understands concepts. His example and structured approach to learning is beneficial to the other students he works with and to the class as a whole. In addition, he is unfailingly polite and has a positive and interested demeanor. Alan is an outstanding student who is a pleasure to have in class." Another teacher adds, "Alan is a thoughtful, respectful student with demonstrate straight leadership skills. He asks clarifying questions, turns in all of his work, and keeps his camera on at all times. He shows exemplary character through his compassion, honesty, trustworthiness, responsibility, and optimism and loyalty in creating a positive Zoom environment. Alan's goal is continued success in school and to eventually attend a good university for a career in medicine or dentistry." Tennis is Alan's second love. He has been playing since he was six years old and continues to be on the court three times a week. Last year, his team turned fourth place in a tournament for the Junior League of NorCal. Alan is also a fast runner. In 5th and 6th grades, he placed in the West Side Relays. In addition to sports, Alan is a member of his church youth group, and he enjoys the summer program they offer. He also loves reading historical fiction and playing video games. Like many, Alan is very concerned about the effects of COVID-19. He hopes that there is a vaccine by the end of this year and that the pandemic will become part of history rather than a current event, his family adds. Alan's a very hardworking student. We are very proud of him and honored as his parents for receiving the Student of the Month Award. Alan Hall-Blean is one of those all-around amazing students. We are also very proud to have Alan represent Pedalina Junior High as Student of the Month.
Thank you. Okay, moving on, Casa Grande.
One of the Casa students I saw earlier but can't find now, but we can do the other one for now?
Alright.
Okay, Marceli, Cody is here.
I will be presenting for Casa Grande. Casa Grande High School is proud to present Cody Lu for December Student of the Month. Cody Lu is a senior at Casa Grande High School. When he is not studying or in class, Cody Lu enjoys playing both the cello and piano, discovering new shows on Netflix, and exploring the Bay Area. Recently, Cody has visited the town of Windsor and Sausalito in an attempt to see the surrounding areas before going to college. Cody also works many hours through the week after his classes at the sourdough and co. to both earn money and gain work experience. After high school, Cody dreams of attending four-year college, followed by medical school in the hopes of eventually becoming a general surgeon. He has spent the last few months finalizing his applications for several schools. He hopes to either attend UC Santa Barbara, UC Davis, or University of Southern California. I also encourage you to go to Stanford. I know you'll get in. I'm also proud to present Ariana O'Shea for December Student of the Month. Ariana O'Shea is the daughter of Corinna and William and the older sister of Billy and Daniela. She enjoys going out into nature, whether that means hiking, going to the beach, or kayaking. Ariana also loves listening to music and hanging out with her close friends. Social distancing, of course. Recently, she's been playing a lot of board games and has currently been on a winning streak for Monopoly, which is a talent of its own. Ariana has also loved school, and although she misses the class environment, she is still appreciative of everything she is learning through social distancing, like legal studies, human geography, and physics. From her time at Casa, one of her favorite classes she's been taking is 3D animation last year because it both combined creativity and computers. Next year, Ariana plans to attend college, although she doesn't know exactly which one she will go to, yet she's excited for her future.
Congratulations. Thank you so much. Pedalina, hi. You're on.
Hi. So the first Student of the Month for Pedalina High is Annika Ford. Annika is a senior at Pedalina High School that has been involved in numerous clubs on campus, from the inner club to the Student Advisory Council. She has been active in making her community in and outside Pedalina High a better place. For the past three years, Annika has been rowing for the North Bay Rowing Club here on our beautiful Pedalina River. Though the COVID pandemic has made her put some of her athletic plans on hold, Annika still trains every day because she is planning on rowing at UCSD next fall. As an inspiring veterinarian, she has taken a strong interest in the sciences. Through balancing honors and AP classes, are quite challenging, Annika always finds enjoyment in the little things, be it raising chickens with Miss Arns in her junior veterinary science class or exploring the strange sea creatures on the mid-ocean ridge in Mr. Takata's marine science class. Studying animals is her passion, as she is extremely excited to pursue her interest in STEM at UC San Diego. Annika dedicates her successes in life and at school to her hardworking teachers, inspirational coaches, and loving parents. Though this year has been very uncertain at times, she is excited to push forward and see what the future holds. Congrats, Annika. And then our second Student of the Month is Matthew Candell. Matthew Candell is a senior at Pedalina High School. He thoroughly enjoys learning for its own sake and thus has taken 11 AP courses across a variety of disciplines. He has consistently maintained a class ranking within the top five, garnering an overall academic GPA of 4.41. He was also a co-founder and secretary of the Pedalina High School History Club. He has also participated on the PHS Boys Golf Team for each of his first three years at the high school and plans to continue in the spring. Outside of school, Matthew maintains a consistent presence in the community. He has 200 hours of community service in which he has coached the local CYO basketball teams and Boys and Girls Club flag football teams. He has provided free tutoring services for several students, helping them to advance their capabilities in any variety of subjects, although primarily mathematics and science. Much of his free time is spent either researching or exploring the dozens of local, regional, and state parks with his hiking group. Matthew intends to pursue a degree in the International Relations at a four-year university in the fall of 2021. Congrats, Matthew.
Thank you, Pedalina High, that was great. And now finally, Students of the Semester from PAX.
Hi, everyone, I'll be presenting tonight.
You are?
I am. 8th Grade is very pleased to present Parnav Krishna to the board for PAX Fall Semester Award. In a difficult time of distance learning, Parnav has kept a 4.0 GPA by being an advocate for his own improvement in learning. Parnav has proven to be extremely kind and helpful in class. He waits to help classmates in breakout rooms and is never in a hurry to finish his work. He's always willing to stop and explain a new concept to a classmate, especially in math. For his own benefit, Parnav attends office hours regularly to improve and check his work and ask questions in all subjects. On top of being an excellent student, Parnav is always extremely polite and thoughtful. His smile and ability to make school fun is so encouraging to his peers and teachers. Parnav is a patient and kind human who always puts in the effort to make sure everyone feels welcome, accepted, and appreciated. Parnav's 7th grade teacher noted, "He made a point that at every class, he said thank you to him and was always at the top of class in both math and science." Parnav's parents shared that he is a happy and loving kid. He's very sincere and hardworking. He wants to do his best in everything he does, no matter how long it takes, sometimes as late as midnight. He ensures that it doesn't get compromised and the output is never not perfect. He keeps track of everything by himself, and he's very independent. However, when he needs help, he reaches out to us, friends, and the teachers, so he gets what is needed to move forward. He willingly helps others and devotes time when somebody needs help and does it cheerfully. We are blessed to have him as our son. PAX is so thankful for Parnav as a student. Congratulations. And as you can tell, I call him Mr. Smiles. He never stops smiling. Thanks, Parnav. You always make my day when I see you.
Thank you.
Alright, our second Student of the Semester. I'm very excited to present Luna Dater to the Board of PAX Fall Semester Award. Luna has kept a 4.0 GPA during distance learning because she cares deeply about her academic achievements. She does not just focus on her grades and scores, but makes sure she learns and understands new concepts. She is not afraid to ask questions both in class and during office hours, and she always makes time to attend office hours, whether it's to get help or just check in. Her ability to give 110% at all times is an admirable skill. She just doesn't give up. Luna has proven time and time again that she is a student leader in both breakout rooms and is always productive member of her team. While Luna is very studious, she's also extremely kind and polite. She always enters the class with a smile and a friendly hello and is always willing to help a peer succeed. Luna's 7th grade teacher noted that she is an incredible motivation to do her best each and every day. She works to understand and master every concept. If she didn't get it, she fought until she understood. Luna's parents shared, "I can do it. I won't be able to do it. No, wait, I can do it. I just needed time to figure it out. I did it." This is Luna moving through her academic years. She has the ability to work through challenges of academics and has proven to be successful time and time again. To say we are proud of her academic achievements is an understatement. However, what impresses us most about Luna in school is not only her efforts, but her heart. She is a great kid who shows others love through her actions, helping others, inviting someone alone at lunch to eat with her, switching to another lunch table when there isn't enough room, and cheering other kids on. Luna has a lot to be proud of. We are glad you see it too. Congratulations, Luna. PAX is a better place because of you. And if you didn't notice our theme, it's nice to be nice. Way to go, Parnav and Luna. You're awesome.
Thank you, Ari. Okay, moving on.
Ellen. So if we have our 6.3 here, we should move that up and then do the budget revision after that.
Okay, is it listed here?
I believe so, so let's.
Yes, I know Rose Burcina is attending.
She's going to give us a Stop It presentation?
So Ashley, can you move Rose over?
And then Chris, you'll be on after Rose.
Yeah.
Hi, everyone. My name is Rochelle. So I am actually with Stop It, not Rose, although very similar, close names. I do believe Erin, there she is. Erin Tarkanian is our representative from RESIG. She is also on this call. But for the purposes of the presentation, I was just going to kind of quickly lead us through so that you guys can get on with your meeting and enjoy the rest of your evening. So first things first, just a quick introduction. My name is Rochelle. I am the Senior National Account Manager over at Stop It, and I work with RESIG really on a daily basis, but we touch in very regularly. And I was asked to be a part of this meeting because the board had some questions about what Stop It is, what does the rollout look like at each site? Potentially, if you had questions about guidance on what does the process look like and best practices, things like that. So that's why I'm here. It would be excellent if the person that is handling the Zoom could let me present, if possible, and then we could go through some really quick slides. And to keep me on time, I think I have about 10 minutes, is that right?
Sounds good.
Okay. So I guess we can just kind of keep this informal. So first things first, how many of you know what Stop It is? Just like a show of hands. Okay, so good news is, it looks like most of you know what this is, which is great because RESIG has been providing it to you now for a couple of years. And it looks like most of your schools have most recently started using it in the last few months, actually. So there was some sort of push with our customer success team, Alyssa, to help get your schools up and running. For those of you that don't know what Stop It is, Stop It is an anonymous reporting system that we are currently providing to you on behalf of RESIG, your insurance provider. And it's here to teach students, staff, and parents how to recognize the warning signs of individuals displaying at-risk or inappropriate behavior. It also allows folks to gather the narrative, any screenshots, videos that may provide details of that observed behavior. In addition to obviously giving you, well, not you, but the administrators at your sites, the initiative to be able to act immediately by using the ARS, seeing what students are submitting to them completely anonymously, and being able to potentially even work with law enforcement or call 911 if needed for an immediate intervention.
You should be able to access the screen.
Okay, let me see. Share screen, yes, okay, we've done it. Sorry, you guys use Zoom in a very, very great way, but I have never seen it used this way. So let me try to figure this out now. Share screen. We're gonna go to the screen too. Fingers crossed, everybody.
There we go.
Yay, okay. So these were questions, I believe, that the board had asked of RESIG and Stop It to answer. So we just kind of quickly went through this slide, which is what Stop It Anonymous Reporting actually is. And then in terms of how it works, can everybody still see my screen, okay? Great. In terms of how it works, it's really a three-step process. So the first step is that somebody will report an incident. And you can report an incident through Stop It through either our mobile app, which all students and staff, parents can download easily on their phones, our website, or our 24/7/365 telephone hotline number. Once an incident is reported, that incident automatically gets sent to our Incident Management Center, which is open 24/7/365, at which point the Incident Management Counselor will take a look, see if the incident requires escalation. So if there shows to be imminent threat to oneself or others, and there's clear evidence backing up that threat, the agent will then escalate that to the school admins if during school hours. If not during school hours, we will always err on the side of caution and contact local law enforcement in case that student is indeed in potential of hurting himself or someone else. And then the third and final step would be the management and resolving of that incident through the site admins. So school admins do have access to what we call Stop It Admin, and that essentially allows them on the back end to see what the students are writing in, any media or attachments that they may have shared, in addition to being able to message that student back and forth if it is a live incident. If not, our Incident Management Center can also message that tipster and handle it from there. So I just wanted to quickly go through that because I wasn't sure if everybody knew what Stop It was. Yeah, absolutely.
So if a student sees something or whatever, and they do it on their phone, it doesn't go immediately to the administrator, it goes to you guys first?
It goes to both in tandem. So it gets sent to our IMC center, but it also gets sent to our admins. However, we are working on creating a new system where if admins are, for example, after hours, right? Most admins don't want to be available potentially 24/7 in case there is a life-threatening emergency situation. Our Incident Management Counselors can then just take that on completely and manage it from there. And then that way, at least the admins know what's walking into their schools the next day, but we're not delaying getting that student help if it is indeed a life-threatening situation.
Thank you.
Yeah, of course. So I know we're short on time, so I'm gonna quickly go through other things. If we have time, I'll show you how it actually works. But since it looks like most of you raised your hands, you know what it is. Hopefully, you can share your other board members what the Stop It app looks like when you submit an incident. So to get into the program benefits itself, it really is here to create a culture of upstanders. And again, just like the students we saw that were Students of the Semester and Students of the Month, these are students that are embedding in this culture how to look out for each other and if they see something, to say something. This also allows providing overall greater perception of safety and well-being for students and staff. They know that they are 100% anonymously protected by whatever they say, so they're more willing usually. so they're more willing usually to be able to say something if and when they don't have a trusted adult or if and when they fear possible retribution. This also allows them to create safer, healthier school environment and is completely complimentary to you because it's provided to you by Ressig. So something that has been really interesting that I wanted to share with the board tonight is that since COVID-19, we have seen a dramatic increase in the number of life-threatening incidents. So these are incidents, again, that are involving immediate harm to oneself or someone else. Incidents that we're seeing coming through are things like anxiety and depression, suicidal ideation, possible event trauma, social isolation, cyberbullying. Cyberbullying is really big right now. In addition to neglect and abuse and lack of trusted adults. So just because school may not be in person, it doesn't mean that things aren't still happening behind closed doors. And now these kids have actually lost access to that potential adult or peer that they normally would see in person during the school day. So we really just wanted to articulate that even as we move into the holiday break or the more quieter months from a school perspective, it's equally important to remind your students and your staff that this product and the service is available to them as the holidays can tend to bring on a lot of difficulties for many people. So in terms of what the rollout at each site looks like, this will require essentially a really quick optional meeting with our onboarding specialists who will go through overall onboarding steps and questions, in addition to reviewing admin roles and responsibilities. Again, before I jumped on this meeting, I took a look and it looks like most of your, all five of the schools have launched the program. However, it looks like three may need to relaunch the program based on the number of activations and uses that we're seeing coming across. So this could be a really great time, either right before the holiday break or right after the holiday break, to kind of relaunch and reteach all of the site admins how to use Stop It and how to get Stop It out into the hands of their students and staff. This will also include a quick account setup in our Stop It Admin Onboarding Wizard. So it's very easy and automatic. You just kind of click like TurboTax, X, Y, Z. It kind of walks you through the training. We'll also offer a full 40-minute training for those that would rather sit and have that kind of hand-to-hand guidance from one of our onboarding specialists, in addition to letting you know how to introduce the program to the staff and the students if you haven't already. And luckily this year, we have a virtual launch kit because we all know the new virtual reality living at home. Many students are not in-school in session. So if and when your sites wanted to relaunch this program, they can absolutely do it 100% virtually. One of the questions that we received was what guidance does Ressig and Stop It provide? So we do offer ongoing webinars, which were these relaunch and relearn's that we were talking about or potentially new to Stop It. So come the new year in the fall, you're going to get a whole new influx of students that may have not been trained on what Stop It is or know that it's even being offered to their school. So this is a great opportunity to train those new students, but also to refresh existing students in the student body about the Stop It program. We'll also give you all awareness, training, and launch materials. And it's already actually included in the Stop It Admin section on the backend. We have 24/7, 365-day support. So even if you're dealing with an incident late at night and you're having an issue or maybe come the next day, one of your staff members is having a hard time getting into the system, we can absolutely help them at any time. And then any additional program materials that a site might need or even the board might need, for example, materials to share on the website, potential social media channels, et cetera, we are more than happy to work with that and give you materials for that. Someone had also asked what the best practices for admins were. These are just a few. Again, when you go into that full relaunch and relearn or you meet with our onboarding specialists, they'll definitely get into this in more detail. But really, we want to show you how the app works so that you understand how it looks when a student is submitting a report. We also want you to be able to know how to look at that report. So that goes into the Stop It Admin section of things. So knowing how you can two-way dialogue with an existing student or tipster, how you can take notes in the system, and even how to close out an incident because we definitely don't want to have a bunch of open incidents come the end of the school year. We can also show you how to send out broadcast notifications. So you can send out a quick little broadcast to everybody in your student body about potential updates. So maybe it's coming back to school post-COVID, et cetera, whatever day it may be. You can easily and quickly do that in the Stop It app. You can also add additional incident questions. So if you see on the app, there may be a question that you're getting a lot from students, you have the complete autonomy and ability to customize those questions and automatically add it so that you can directly ask students for more information upon their submission. And we have virtual launch kits. So again, most of your sites already know this because they have been talking with us. But we do have virtual launch kits available so they know what a successful launch can look like and how to do it during the new virtual reality. Some quick additional Stop It services. Ressig does provide our SEL Center to you and all of your sites at no cost. So this SEL Center, Social Emotional Learning Center, has a lot of great health resources for students, staff, and parents. In addition, these resources can be sent to a student or parent directly via email or even directly through one of those incidents. So if a student is talking about dealing with cyberbullying and they're not sure how to respond or how to react, there is a way for an admin to just very easily send something directly through that incident type, in addition to having that two-way chat feature with that student directly. So in summary, I know I talked really fast, but I wanted to make sure I covered all of your excellent questions. The way that the Stop It app works is that a student observes and submits an incident, again, in one of three ways. From there, our IMC, our Incident Management Center, will receive, monitor, and escalate the incident as needed, in addition to immediately sending that tip to our admins. And then from there, it's really up to the sites and the admins to act upon that incident. Again, if it's after-hours and we see that it's involving imminent threat to oneself or others, we'll go ahead and our Incident Management Center will contact local authorities to get that student proper help. But with that, it's a pretty simple system. It does look like a couple of your schools have used it pretty regularly since its initial launch, I believe, at the end of 2017. But again, like I mentioned, there's about three that I think could really benefit from attending a relaunch and relearn come the start of the new year. So at this point, I just wanted to see if anybody had any additional questions. And Erin, please let me know if I missed anything. I think she's in here. Does everything make sense?
Thank you for that. That was great. Yes.
Awesome. And if anybody has any follow-up questions after the fact or if you want to give your sites more information about how to get this out to their students, again, before the holiday break, feel free to email me or Erin or Rose from Ressig and we'll be able to get you the information you need.
I have one question. When you say if something happens late at night and you're going to... What authorities do you mean you're going to contact?
So our system is set up so that we have local law enforcement contacts already pre-populated in the system for all of your schools. So whatever student, school that student is associated with will contact that local jurisdiction law enforcement agency and let them know, hey, this is Stop It. We work in conjunction with Petaluma City Schools. We see that an incident has just come through at this time. This is the student's name. This is where they're located. Can you please go and get them help, et cetera?
I'm just questioning whether law enforcement is always the best call for a student who's having maybe a mental issue. I don't know that law enforcement is the be-all, end-all answer to any problem.
No, 100%. And we agree, which is why we'll always first try to contact your admins. But because it's after-hours and because we know that not all admins are going to be available 24/7, we need to have a backup in place because the last thing we want is a child in crisis to not get any help just because one of their admins is asleep. So and again, when we call 911, it's usually emergency trucks, firefighter, or an EMT. It's not always necessarily law enforcement.
Okay, thank you.
You got it.
Anybody else have questions? They're very quiet tonight.
I know. I was expecting a rave, but this is great. Well, thank you all so much for your time.
Thank you very much. Okay, we're moving on now to the budget. Dom, dom, dom.
What an intro. Thank you, Ellen. Okay, so tonight I'm going to be reviewing First Interim, which, as you know, is when we're presenting how we look financially as of October 31st, but it also includes really all of the information we have through when we completed, which was about a week ago. So online and in your infamous binders, if you received your budget binders, just to kind of refresh your memory about what's in them, there's the narrative and assumptions that kind of goes through a narrative of what's going on, both at the state level and the local level, and then goes through detailed assumptions primarily used by our County Office of Education to help to evaluate our budget and how we do or what assumptions we've used to modify the budget and then also what assumptions we're using for multi-year projections. So that's all attached in your budget, but it's also online. So what I'm going to focus on tonight is primarily the comparative spreadsheets and just kind of go through those with you. So I'm going to share that in a second. And then I'll probably touch on a couple of other things that are attached both in the binder and online. So hopefully you have those resources available because I won't be able to share all of them. Can you guys see the budget revision? Do you see the spreadsheets?
Not yet. It just says you've started screen sharing.
Okay, give it a moment. My screen sharing is paused. Why is my screen sharing paused? Okay, now can you see it?
Nope. Just a black screen with tiny little white writing.
Okay, let me try again. Okay, can you see it now?
Yep.
Okay. So this is, again, we always have three components to our budget. We have the unrestricted, the restricted, and the combined total general fund. Just as a reminder for people who might not know, Petaluma City Schools is made up of several organizations, Petaluma City Elementary District, Petaluma Joint Union High School District. And we're made up of three charters, PACs in our secondary, Mary Collins in our secondary, and Pengrove Elementary in our elementary. And then, of course, we have South County Consortium, which is also part of our budget. So when we look at the general fund, it includes all of those organizations. So let me go up to the revenue. So typically, at First Interim, I'm presenting budget revision number one. But as you'll recall, we brought you a budget revision in August, the 45-day budget adjustment because there was such a dramatic change from the adopted budget, which was based on the May revise, to the final state budget, which the legislature fortunately jumped in or stepped in and came up with another way to balance the budget rather than give us these very draconian, what was equivalent to about 10% reductions. So in that budget revision, we had used prior year P2ADA, which we're now able to do. In fact, we have to use prior year 2019/2080. And if you look at just at the bottom where it says total LCFF, you can see that that brought us up roughly $4.9 million. What we later found out is that because various charters and districts advocated, because remember at that time, we were not including Gateway to College or Sixth Grade Academy because those charters had been closed. But what we determined, because of course that meant we weren't truly being held harmless, right? We weren't getting to use ADA from last year, and that represented roughly 72 ADA. So what we received was clarification through some cleanup language to the legislature that we were able to increase our ADA and include Sixth Grade Academy and Gateway to College. And so you can see the net change in our LCFF from that budget revision number one to now is about $642,000. So that 72 ADA is pretty significant. In addition, we also have our preliminary Cbeds numbers. And why is that important? Because we have that unduplicated count of EL Foster and Free and Reduced Eligibility that are included here. So we've updated it for a lot of different things, including our unduplicated counts. Those are not finalized yet. The state came in and actually gave an extension through December 31st rather than October 31st to be able to track that information. So we're continuing as we get certification information, direct certification information from the county, for example, we can then update our unduplicated numbers. So it could change further when we get into Second Interim. Feel free to stop me if I'm going too fast or too slow. The other thing I'll comment here, and I'm spending a little bit of time here because obviously this is our main bread and butter. This is the majority of our funding. Of our $105,000,000, $106,000,000 budget, $70 million now comes from the LCFF. And so this is pretty significant for us. You'll also see there's dramatic changes between the local revenues. So you can see some are up, $605,000, the ERA funds. While the education protection account is down 626. So again, all of this is driven by how the formulas work, but it's that overall net amount, that total LCFF that's really important for us to pay attention. We have updated all the local property taxes, for example, based on the November property tax estimate. So basically, once they do the tax roll and we all receive our property tax bills, they update our proportionate share of those taxes based on that tax roll, and that's when we get updated information. And so we've made those adjustments. And again, state aid is proportionately changed. So if property taxes go up, state aid goes down, and that's what you're seeing reflected here. Okay, so moving on. You can see there's really very little change in the federal and state revenues and the unrestricted. But when you get down to local revenues, that's where we're starting to see some dramatic shifts. So due to the pandemic, we did not collect a lot of lease and rental income from some of our tenants who were not state-funded and from a lot of the use of our facilities. The use of our facilities, we shut down the end of March, early April, and we have not really opened them back up. There's a few exceptions to that. CHP wanted us to continue to allow the motorcycle school that operates on the Blacktop for Petaluma Junior High. They can do that in a very socially-distanced way, and so we have made a few exceptions. But generally, we're not collecting those types of fees. So you can see our reductions there. Interest earnings, interest rates have fallen. And when we look at our first quarter interest collections as compared to last year, we realized we really had to reduce down our interest earnings. We'll be paying close attention to that as we get into Second Interim to see if there's any changes there. Our inter-agency fees for transportation, transportation's a real conundrum. I'm not really sure. There's a lot of questions on the assumptions we're using for transportation. So that's kind of a wait-and-see, but we have reduced down what we believe we're going to collect from our member, excuse me, our member districts. Local donations, on the other hand, are up. We would expect that. Honestly, we would usually be seeing a much more dramatic increase as a First Interim. But again, being at distance learning, the level of local site donations is somewhat down. And then our contribution to restrictive programs, again, primarily this is a contribution to special education, including South County. And we're projecting that to be a little bit higher, not significant. Going down to the expenditure side, we've really gone through staffing because remember, when we adopted the budget, we had a lot of open positions. And so we have to estimate where do open positions fall? Where are we going to hire teachers, for example? Are they going to be on Step 1? Are they going to be on Step 11? Are they going to be on column 1 or 2? Are they going to be on column 4? We never know that. So depending on the level of vacancies, we'll depend on where we see where we see our staffing, our final staffing come in. So by the time we get into October and November, we're reconciling position control on the budget to what our final staffing is and able to make modifications. I will tell you that I analyzed a lot of the substitute budget because substitute budgets would be considered or would be included here as well. Because we don't really know what's happening in the spring, even though we saw our substitute costs down, we did not make any dramatic shifts in our substitute costs. So this is not indicative of substitute costs being down. We left those budgets intact because we really don't know what's going to happen when we get into hybrid learning or in-person learning. And so we were really kind of waiting on that to reevaluate those when we get into Second Interim. The administrative costs has primarily changed because we have a couple of administrators on leave of absence due to positive things like maternity leave. And so we have to budget then substitute costs. And so that's primarily what that is. And then if you look at classified salaries, you can see some changes, very minor. The most significant is probably in the area of custodial because we are looking at beefing up our custodial, whether it's substitutes or whether it's trying to bring on more custodians. And then the salary benefits have basically changed accordingly. PERS has the most dramatic, and that's because, as you know, the PERS rate came in pretty, you know, less in the final adopted budget than what we had anticipated. So we've gone through and reconciled all of those PERS positions, and you're seeing somewhat of a change here because of that. Going down, you're not seeing a lot of dramatic changes other than in materials and supplies, and that's primarily because of local site donation carryover. So we have a lot of local site donation budgets in the unrestricted. Many of the school sites know that. We account for them in their own little specific areas. They had about 390,000 worth of carryover. And so the majority of this is indicative of that carryover. When we get to deficit spending, it's important to keep that in mind because those are one-time in nature, that carryover, they get budgeted this year only, and if they spend it, it doesn't come back. So when we increase the budget here, this 460 or close to 400,000 of it, that really is one-time in nature. Some of these other budgets are really probably related to custodial supplies and increasing custodial supplies for obvious reasons, things like hand sanitizer. Some of our, you know, cleaning supplies like that are a little bit more costly. We've been ordering them. But going down, you're not seeing a significant fluctuation, really. We've gone through and we've analyzed budgets. You know, $22,000 in utilities in a $1.5 billion budget is not a significant percentage increase, what, percent and a half, I think. But what, but what we did do is we went back and looked at our utilities. So we looked at how we closed the year last year, what we're budgeting this year, and then we made some modifications. We are seeing increases in sewer services. That's a lot of the increases, and of course, water. Going down again, you can see field trips, other contracts, you know, services. Those are primarily those local donation adjustments that were collected up above. If we're collecting another 90-some thousand dollars, those budgets are coming in here primarily. Now, this does not mean that kids are going on field trips. But as they're collecting money for field trips, it gets budgeted in these accounts. And then it sits there either used or unused, and it becomes next year's carryover for those sites if they don't use it. Another kind of important is the 5900, the communications and telephone. So this budget has increased by 117,000. Now, it doesn't mean our telecommunications costs are up 117. It really relates to the loss of E-rate credits. So we have been leveraging E-rate. E-rate is a federal program. And over the years, historically, they've given a lot of E-rate credits for telecommunications. Those E-rate credits, those programs have basically changed dramatically, and we have lost a significant amount of those credits. So basically, this is bringing our telephone and communications budgets to really where the costs typically are because the amount of credits that we've used over the years to leverage that have really been significantly reduced. So this is kind of an ongoing hit to our budget. So in the future, we'll be basing our budget closer to 275,000 than what's been in the past. The other important piece is the 7619 or other, all of the transfer, interfund transfers. This is primarily increased dramatically because of the cafeteria fund. So as you know, the state legislature and governor took action to basically prohibit districts from eliminating, for lack of work, lack of funds, positions in three areas. One was custodial and one was the cafeteria fund area. And so the challenge is, although we're offering a summer seamless grab and go, and we are offering summer seamless for our learning cohorts that we have, we're not selling any secondary lunch. We have almost no lunch sales, clearly, no à la carte sales. And so our revenues in the cafeteria fund are down dramatically, far more than this $300,000. Part of what we've been able to do is redirect those resources, basically staff. They've been redirected to perform other important roles for the districts, such as being lead cohort or cohort leads for some of the small academic learning cohorts that we have. And so we've really been able, you know, and I just want to give an acknowledgement out to those classified staff who are doing that, that they've been super willing to jump in and really take on that role and embrace it. And I also like to just acknowledge Matthew because I know Matthew has, Matthew Harris has really done a good job spending hours trying to figure out a very complicated puzzle of trying to move people around to really redirect those resources. So this is kind of a stay tuned budget. This is not a conservative. This easily could grow by another couple hundred thousand when we get to second interim. So we're going to be monitoring this closely and kind of seeing where our reimbursement funds are coming in from the federal and state summer seamless programs that we're offering, and then we're just going to take it from there. But I just wanted to highlight this because this is somewhat fluid. When I say our revenues are down, they're down by hundreds of thousands of dollars. Like we, the food service program is a $2 million program. So when you take those revenues down by eliminating all food sales and seriously reducing the participation in the free and reduced meal program, you have a significant impact, especially in light of the fact that we we really couldn't take action to eliminate staff when we had very little program. So coming down here, you can see, if you look in that column B, see the local site donations, I have that under the 45-day budget. That $388,000, that's the amount of local site donations that are included up in that 4300 budget. So this is the one-time piece, close to $389,390,000 is one-time in nature. So if you go back up to this excess of revenues over expense, that 896,000, Chris, why did it go up 456,000? Well, we know 388,000 of it is one-time specifically for local site donations and the carryover that we've budgeted. So if you back that 388 out, then all of a sudden, you're looking at more like 500,000. So does that make sense? Okay, I want to touch on the restricted side of the budget quickly. Oh, we are maintaining our 3% reserves, that 3.189, our 2% additional reserve for economic uncertainty, that 2.126, and the available balance is 4 million, 4.2 million. Now, if you look at the multi-year projections, don't get too excited about that 4.2 million because the multi-year projections are very challenging when we get to 2223 because we have a couple of things there that hit us, and I'll talk about that in a moment. So if I go to the restricted budget, you're going to see some dramatic changes in our revenue on the side of the house, and that's because of a couple of different things. So at the first budget revision, we had included the majority of CARES Act funds. But what we have here are carryover and deferred revenue for all of the title funds, Title I, Title II, Title III, the other Title III, Title IV. We have carryover in the Career Tech Ed grants for the state. And what we also found out under the CARES Act funds for both 8290 and 8590, the federal and the state portion, is that we're able to continue to get CARES Act funds for Gateway to College and Sixth Grade Academy to support our secondary and our elementary schools as well. So we've adjusted the budgets for that, too. You can see interagency fees, we've reduced the interagency fees for the South County Consortium build back, that negative 164. That's part of why our proportionate share went up. So when you look at this 77,000 or increase in special ed, part of it is because when we looked at the pupil count numbers, our pupil counts stayed the same or went up a bit, while the feeder districts went down. So our proportionate share went up, their proportionate share went down. So there's a direct correlation between this 164 and the 77. They're not dollar for dollar, but there's a direct correlation. The other fees and contracts right here, this 42,000, you'll be seeing further reductions to that. We had built in a significant amount of revenues for childcare programs. So we collect probably about $180,000 in childcare. We're still evaluating this budget because we, again, these are resources that have been retargeted and redirected to our small learning cohorts. So once all of those modifications and transfers have been in place, then we'll make further changes to these childcare budgets. But that's in particular what that is. So going down to expenditure side of the house, you're going to see, again, this is a lot of fluctuation because we're budgeting for open positions. There were some open positions that we're not going to fill. And so we've made some modifications there. This COVID-19 coordinator that was added, again, that's using CARES Act funds. These are categorical funds that are being used for that. You can see these small academic support cohorts. So that's moving some of those food service workers, excuse me, over and some of those childcare workers over. So that's redirecting those resources. You can see under 2300, that's adding a license MFT, and we're using IRMS dollars to support that. Clearly, we have a dramatic need for more mental health services as evidenced by the presentation you just saw. And then, of course, we're adjusting, we're adjusting the benefits in accordance with some of the other position changes that you see up above. The most dramatic is here in the 4000s. Most of this is CARES Act funds that we've basically budgeted and a lot of which has already been spent. We'll be presenting some information at the Budget Advisory Committee on Thursday, just kind of talking about what are all those various buckets? How much were they? And primarily, what have we spent the money on? So we'll be presenting that at the Budget Advisory Committee on Thursday. You can also see lottery carryover. A lot of this is carryover. So as we post carryover from our various categorical funds, remember, we talked about deferred revenue and prior year carryover up in the revenues above. Well, we then have to budget the offsetting expenditures as well. Let's see, what else is of interest here? You can see a lot of this is site funded, like athletics, all of those donations above. You know, athletics and maintenance are still operating. It doesn't necessarily mean they're spending the money. A lot of this is just being budgeted as they collect, as they collect revenues. They tell us, put it in these categories, or they put it in those categories. But again, if it's unspent, then it'll become carryover for next year. And you can see some of the fluctuations in special education contracts. Other contract services, a lot of this is HVAC related. Routine restrict, RRM is routine restricted maintenance. So as we posted carryover for maintenance, we've been budgeting, we've done a lot of HVAC repairs, even some replacement. And so that's a lot of what this 5849 is. Career Tech Ed, you know, we still have quite a bit of Career Tech Ed money, C-TIG money. And so these are specifically around auto shop. And then South County Consortium provides each district that provides a classroom, $5,000 per classroom. And so we just adjusted the South County budget to reflect what that should be, which is 85,000. And then, of course, this is always a zero any fund balance. So this 6.28, that's the carryover that we've posted. So when you see all those big budgets up here in the 4000s, this is where we've posted carryover dollars. Because remember, we typically post it to a 4300, and then the school sites departments move it out from there. So you'll see this number, this 4300, go down pretty dramatically when we get to second interim because the school sites and departments have pushed it out to other categories. So is there any questions on the budget piece? Because I'd like to just touch on the multi-year projections.
Um, Chris, I have just a quick question, and I, I'm sure you've answered it before. On the CARES Act funds, does it, it's not restricted? It goes just to the general fund or to restricted and unrestricted? Or is it designated for certain things?
No, it's very restrictive, and it is in the restricted side of the budget. It does have very clear strings attached. There's five different, five or six different buckets, and some buckets are targeted specifically for PPE. Some buckets are targeted, you know, specifically for other things like how do you support distance learning? Or how do you support hybrid learning? And so the buckets are very restricted. You have to spend on certain things. The largest one we have received actually has a December 30th timeline that that money has to be spent by. And so we have used it primarily for things like making sure all the kids in the elementary K6, TK to 6 have the latest and greatest iPads. We've done Chromebooks. We've updated and upgraded all of the teacher MacBook Pros, which actually just came in and they're being rolled out. So we've spent a lot of money improving the infrastructure for the, for student learning in this virtual environment. So that's, that's a lot of what this money is targeted for. We're also using some of it for the small learning cohort. So that's where we're redirecting those resources of staff out of food service, out of childcare and into CARES Act money because they're specifically doing that. And there was actually, it was called out that positions that, you know, we were prevented from doing any kind of reductions in force that if they were retargeted, that we could use that money for that. So it was actually specifically highlighted, for example. Good question. So I don't have it to share. Yes, go ahead, children.
Just related to that, Chris, have you, I know the second stimulus bill has been, you know, really hard to come by, but it looks like maybe it's on the horizon. Have you had any indication of what kind of support we'll get from the second stimulus?
I haven't. I have not heard what those dollars we are hoping because I'll be honest with you, the elementary stimulus, the elementary CARES Act is almost completely gone. Most of the iPads used up a tremendous amount of that, and the learning cohorts have as well. And so, you know, we could definitely use more CARES Act funds, whatever act it's going to be called. But I don't have any, any kind of really indication of how much schools are going to get yet at this point. I'm hoping by the time we get closer to it being passed, that we'll have some understanding, but nothing at this moment.
And the projections you're about to share with us don't account for any federal stimulus?
That's right, or that's correct. It doesn't account, doesn't include anything in our assumptions.
Thanks.
Other questions before I go on? So in your binder and online, there should be multi-year projections. And I just want to point out a couple of things, and then in those, in the assumptions, I also do a whole section toward the end on multi-year projections and what assumptions I'm using. But in a nutshell, we've taken column C here for both unrestricted and restricted, and we project out what our LCFF funding is going to be using a certain set of assumptions. And I don't know if it'll let me switch. Can you guys see that new thing that I've just put up?
Yeah, I can.
So this is, this is basically me taking our 2019-20, our adopted budget, our 45-day budget, first interim, and then our projections and projecting forward for '21, '22, and '22, '23. So you can see we're pretty flat funded. When we look at this to this, it's pretty flat. When we all of a sudden go here, we're losing 342,000. Why is that, you might ask? So I can tell you that we are able to use 2019-20 P2 ADA for this year's budget. But remember, it includes that 72 ADA for Gateway and Sixth Grade Academy. We will not be able to use that for 2021, '22, and beyond. So we start to see a hit. Now, I've assumed pretty flat ADA here when it comes to projecting out. But I will tell you, our enrollment is down. If you look at those assumptions, we're currently at 7376. We were just over 7,500 a year ago at C beds. I've looked at the information for all of our feeder districts. Everybody in Petaluma, with the exception, I think, of Liberty, is down pretty dramatically on a percent. is down pretty dramatically on a percentage basis. And I talked to our auditors about, I talked to our auditors about other districts that they're auditing, and, and they were actually surprised we're not down more. Many districts are seeing a significant drop in enrollment. And so why is that important? We're held harmless this year. And we're hoping we're going to be held harmless next year, with the exception of Gateway to, Gateway to College and Sixth Grade Academy. But when it comes to 22, 23, we're not going to be held harmless. So we're going to have to use either our projected ADA or 21, 22's ADA. And it's really hard for me at this moment to predict where is our enrollment going to go? Are we going to recover? Or are we going to lose students? So that's kind of the conundrum we're in when we project out. And that's something that we're going to have to pay really close attention to when we get into the spring and we're staffing and projecting for next year. Because right now, we're staffed for about 130 students more than we have. And that's okay at the moment because we're using last year's ADA. But when it gets to next year, and we're loose 7280A from Gateway to College and Sixth Grade Academy, our staffing is going to have to be, we're going to have to be super cautious as we move forward. And then we'll have to see, does our enrollment come back in 21, 22? Because 21, 22 becomes the baseline for 22, 23. So I just wanted to kind of share that. So that summary or that comparison you just saw, that's what we use. We send it to the county office. It summarizes our LCFF calculations across all of our organizations. And we use that to project our multi-year projections. And then what we do is we add things like step and column. They're recommending zero COLA for 21, 22, and 22, 23. So that's what our assumptions are. We're not getting any new revenue. So we're down revenue from ADA. We're not getting any cost of living adjustment. But we're having higher costs because we're assuming step and column adjustments. We're assuming other kind of increases, like in utility costs, you know, in inflation, et cetera. So when we apply all of those assumptions that we typically use, nothing dramatic. We've backed out all those one-time costs, right? All that $388,000. We back that out before we apply inflation or the CPI. And we show deficit spending in the unrestricted of 1.3 million in 21, 22. And it jumps to 3.3 million in 22, 23. It jumps because of a couple of things. Number one, we're not sure where enrollment's going. Number two, we've got a cumulative step and column, right? Step and column for 21, 22, step and column on top of that again for 22, 23. And we get cumulative increases in PERS. The PERS rates go up dramatically. There's the dartboard that's attached. That'll kind of show you what they're projected to be, the PERS rates and the STIRS rates. So STIRS actually goes down a slight bit in 21, 22, from 16.15 to 16%. But then it goes up to 18, over 18% in 22, 23. That's a $650,000 hit for STIRS alone in two years. So we get a balloon payment in two years on STIRS. And then PERS goes up. It continues to go up like 2% each year. So we're getting hit on the STIRS and PERS side pretty dramatically. It's like 850,000 in combined in, in 22, 23. So that's part of what we have to kind of plan for. How do we accommodate that? Now, the good news is, we closed the books with more money because people stopped spending in March, right? That kind of builds up our savings account. So as we apply these deficits, we still look okay in 22, 23. But it means we have to start kind of planning for how do we start pairing it back to accommodate for those ongoing expenses? And how do we start planning for potential non-recovery of our enrollment? Maybe, maybe we'll be fortunate and that 150, 160 kids will come back in 21, 22. But if not, we have to start planning for that. So I just wanted to kind of, you know, put out there the good, the bad, and the ugly. I've tried to do a really realistic assumption on this. I did not project further decline in enrollment. I could have. I did not. We don't know where the economy is going. I was telling Gary earlier, I was feeling actually pretty positive a few weeks ago. And then the pandemic started getting worse. And now with some of the shutdowns happening across the nation, I'm starting to kind of get a little bit more nervous about what the economy is going to look like in 21, 22. They're talking about that we might not get back to where we were before until well into the spring of 21, 22, spring of 22. So I just don't know what that's going to do to the state economy and the state budget and kind of where the governor is going to end. The good news is revenues to date have held strong. So that's good news. We're not seeing dramatic reductions or drops in revenues this fall. The spring will be very telling. So we're going to have to just move careful, you know, move forward very carefully and thoughtfully as we kind of are planning for that. And you know, the best mantra is you hope for the best, but you plan for the worst because we want to be prepared. So more to come on that. Stay tuned. These are just projections. A lot is going to change between now and second interim. And so I don't want to be doom and gloom. You know, I try to be a realist about this stuff. And, you know, there are indicators that say there's some positive indicators out there. But when we start shutting economies down again, it starts making me a little nervous. So so it's kind of a wait-and-see game, but I just wanted to kind of let you know that there are some concerns on the horizon.
If we're projecting deficit spending in year three, how are we claiming the positive certification? Is it through the carryovers?
Because we still maintain our minimum reserves. We're still able to maintain our 5% reserves even in 22, 23 with that level of deficit spending. Because of that savings account, we've been able to establish.
Okay.
So you know that 4.3 million? So you take a million out for 21, 22, you take 3 million out for 2020, for 22, 23. You know what I mean? And we just ate into that available 4.3 million that was sitting in, you know, in that, in that savings account. Other questions? So kind of what's in your binder? Remember what's attached. There's a lot of supplemental information. There's our ADA, where you can see what our ADA is and how it's changed. There's the multi-year projections, the criterion standards that 26 pages of trend analysis we do. There's the dartboard is in here. The common message from SCO is also attached in this. So.
Chris, I just have a, a quick question about enrollment projections in terms of all of the development. I know most of the development is on the east side or, you know, along the river. But has any of that impacted our secondary? Or even our elementary?
It's a good question. I mean, I will tell you right now, I put my glasses on, hold on a second. I will tell you, as of the end of October, enrollment at CASA was sitting at about 1746, not including special day class, 1770 with 70, 73. And Padilla High was about 1352, 1368 with special day class. So, you know, they're holding steady. They're not declining, but they also didn't grow the way we expected them to grow.
Interesting. So we don't know who that population is that's moving in, do we?
You know what? It's, it's, and we're losing kids at almost every single school, except with the exception of really probably McKinley, PAX, Pangrove, we knew was going to be increasing. A lot of that relates to the significant development in Rutter Park.
Rutter Park, yeah.
But literally, we're, we're down at almost every single school that we were projecting. Catlworth, you know, is around 821 regular ed, not including special day class. Padilla Junior High is at about 478 kids plus special day class. So they're, they're now less than 500. So
Wow.
You know, but even when I look at the elementary schools, most of the elementaries are down as well, across the board, kind of. So it's not like we lost them all at one particular school. Yeah. So they're kind of, it's just kind of dramatically, you know, and I'm sure it's related to the distance learning. But we're not unique. Actually, I would say we are unique in that our enrollment has not dropped as dramatically as many other districts have experienced. So they're seeing it across the state of California, this drop in enrollment. And I would say they're probably saying it across, I was watching 60 Minutes one night, and I think it was, was it Florida? It's one of the states, it was a very large district, and they had 7,500 students not show up. And they were going through tracking down these students. So I think it's a nationwide challenge right now. So I also want to point out one other thing that's new, and this is related to COVID-19. I don't know if Cliff is on. I'm sure he is. I can't see him because I've, I'll stop screen sharing. We have a LCFF budget overview for parents. So it's kind of the user-friendly budget. Cliff, I don't know whether you want to chat about that. I'm sorry, I almost forgot to mention it.
Sure. No, it's, so this is year two where the legislature wanted financial information in the LCAP to be more transparent. As you know, the LCAP is very lengthy. So they, they created the budget overview for parents to be a quick synopsis of the total budget. How much LCFF revenue we're getting? How much are we spending on high-needs students? Now, with the suspension of the LCAP this year, the budget overview just kind of sat out there. So they wanted the districts to bring it with the first interim. So you'll notice it, it didn't come in September with the Learning Continuity Plan. So it's, that's why it's here now. But in, in June, it'll be back with the LCAP again.
So we included it here, attached online for first interim. So there should be an attachment called LCFF Budget Overview for Parents. So.
In the notebook as well?
I'm sorry?
Would that be in the notebook that I'm going to go pick up tomorrow?
Yes, if you look under the narrative and assumptions, it's the last, it's the last couple of pages.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions? With that, we believe that this is a solid budget. We believe, you know, we're actually doing really well considering, considering the landscape that we're kind of trying to start living in. But it really is kind of a stay tuned situation. So I appreciate your spending the time to go through it with me.
Thank you for keeping on top of a volatile situation.
Yeah, thank you. Just going to say that.
Is that, yeah.
I think the, the difference is when Chris says we're doing really well, we were faced with a level of a deficit that we would not be able to handle. And so this still creates a level of deficit, but we could manage this deficit. We could not manage what was projected six months ago. That would have been massive, massive cuts. So it's all relative, but it, 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 we can survive this unless there's some, something goes south, we could survive, you know, the next three, three years out.
And I really think the governor, thank you, Gary, it's so true. I really think the governor's budget proposal in January will be very telling.
Yeah.
Where the state thinks we're headed for 21, 22. So really, it's now all about getting to January 10th and seeing what his budget proposal is going to be. Because that'll be a starting place, and it'll kind of give us an idea of what the Department of Finance, how they're advising him and what Governor Yousum is doing. Remember, he is a very, very new governor. As evidenced by his May revise, you know, and the state legislature actually had to step in, you know, and thank goodness they did. Frankly, thank goodness they did.
Well, his kids go to private school, and he doesn't seem to have a whole lot of, he seems rather contemptuous of public education.
Well, you know, and Governor Brown, you know, he was a very strong fiscal, and he had a lot of experience. I mean, Governor Brown, you know, he really helped us situate the state very solidly financially. So anyway, it's going to be interesting to see. So we'll stay tuned for January is what I would say.
Thanks, Chris.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, moving on, we're on to comments from the public, and we're doing that a little bit differently this time. So this first section will be comments from the public on non-agendized items. And then we will have another opening for comments from the public when we get to the consent agenda. And then a third one when we get to the action items. So I'm going to read my little blurb, and then the chat will be open for two minutes. Under Government Code Section 54954.3, members of the public have the right to address the governing board on any items of interest providing it relates to the subject matter jurisdiction of the school district. While government code allows speakers to criticize the district's policies, procedures, programs, services, and/or employees, the district does have a policy specific to complaints against employees. Should comments from the public pertain to a specific district employee, the board requests that the complaint first be submitted in writing to the employer's immediate employees, excuse me, immediate supervisor for investigation. If the comment is about something that is not on the agenda, it will be heard only during the public comment on non-agendized items, which is coming up. Once that part of the meeting is over, comments will only be taken on agenda items during the discussion of those items. And you will have the opportunity to put into the chat that you wish to address the board. The board values public comments, and although we cannot take action or discuss items on the agenda, we listen carefully, take notes, and appreciate input from the public. Public comments are subject to a four-minute per person limit or a 20-minute limit per subject matter. The chat will be open for two minutes. Please include your full name and the top, and your topic.
So we will be opening up, if you want to make a general comment. Any comments that you add now, the, the board won't be responding to. But if you wish to do that at this particular time, you would place your name in the chat and the topic that you would like to discuss. Well, do, take a few minutes or moments, I should say, and give you an opportunity. If not, we'll, we'll, there'll be, there'll be other opportunities when we get to the, the consent items and then action items. So I don't think we have anyone. I don't think we, that, that has some.
Phoebe Ellis.
It's only been open for a minute so far.
Yeah, we'll give it another minute. Thank you. I think we're good.
Okay.
Let's close it. Okay, Phoebe, you are talking about PCS communication.
Hi, good evening, everyone. I just wanted to comment and say thank you very much for that recent communication that came from Padilla City School. Very much appreciated, had a lot of great information. And would just encourage you all to continue to share with parents and families going forward. Lots of questions. I know seniors have questions about upcoming events. And I know there's a lot of things unknown at this point, but I think just general check-ins every couple of weeks are helpful for families and students as well. So thank you very much for all that. Be well.
Thanks, Phoebe. Okay, a report on activities and correspondence of school board members. There was a CHIPA meeting. There was a distance learning discussion with AAUW and teachers and administration, site visits to Valley Vista and Cherry Valley, a budget webinar, the CSBA virtual conference, the Student Voices Forum, there were two of them. One was on Asian Pacific Islander students, and one was the Student Voices Forum, there were two of them. One was on Asian Pacific Islander students, and one was on Indigenous students, and then the Circle Up training. So now we're on to the consent agenda. And again, now, this is the agenda, so you, the public is free to comment on those items. The chat will be open again for another two minutes. Please also.
We need to, I'm not sure we need to keep it open for two minutes, but, I mean, it.
A minute. Be sure to include your full name and what, what you're going to be asking or talking about on the consent agenda. Thank you. I think we're good. So we're closing the chat. And approval of consent agenda by consolidated motion. I need a motion and a second, please.
I move to approve.
Okay, great. All right. Questions? Comment? Discussion?
I had two little questions that I think will be pretty easy for staff to answer. I was just confused. I saw that there was a notice of completion and a change order for the same project. I forget which one it is. But I feel like it, my understanding is it would kind of be one or the other. If there's a, if a change order we need to approve, it clearly hasn't been completed.
At Valley Vista?
Yeah. So typically, you'll see us bring a final change order at the same time that we're bringing a notice of completion, because what happens is we're approving and getting the work done, and then we bring you really for ratification, any minor modifications, which most of these are. And so we're negotiating any final change orders in anticipation of the notice of completion. We won't bring you a notice of completion and then bring a change order after that, or at least we try hard not to do that. So it's pretty standard to bring both at the same time. It's a great question, though, and, and luckily, these projects are wrapping up. Valley Vista took a little bit longer because we needed to wait until Thanksgiving to do lighting retrofit in the multi.
The amount of work that they, we've done on Valley Vista is amazing.
Doesn't it look amazing? I'm super happy. I'm super proud of the work. They're on top, the new daycare and the, and the, I don't know if you've been in the multi?
A lot of, yesterday, it looked great. Yeah. I'm super excited.
I can't wait. Can't wait to see it.
Another question, I guess, is probably more for Cliff. Um, I saw everyone's SPSA. Fully read every single one because working on it. But in the meantime, where is Pedaling My Hives? Am I, it wasn't on the agenda, and it wasn't attached, as far as I know.
Their school site council hadn't had a chance to meet final approve, you know, give final approval. They are meeting on the 10th. So we'll bring that one in January once it's officially approved by the site team.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Catch, Caitlin.
I had a few, more than a few concerns about the site plans as well. There's a lot of achievement gaps, and I did not see them addressed by every single school, their goals. And like, some schools, it's like, students with disabilities and Hispanic students in ELL are like 100 points below standard, and then like white students are like 50 points above. And so I noted that in at least eight of the schools, but not every school was addressing them. So, yeah.
I have the same question.
Me too.
Like, I mean, they just, they know things, but there's no, what happens if it needs added supports?
Yeah, how are they adding the support?
Yeah.
Adding.
Like, are these ELL students not being supported at certain sites? Like, the graduation rates are falling for certain subgroups. I'm very concerned.
So what, what I, you know, what I shared in an email to Trustee Pahn when she asked about this was the, the guidance we've been given by SCO when we develop our LCAP and from the State Board of Education was to try to narrow our focus in our strategic plans. In the past, the LCAP gets very lengthy, and to truly address every gap is, is unrealistic, and the state has, has recognized that. And they introduced last year the ideas of focus goals, broad goals, and maintenance goals with the idea that, you know, you may have, for example, when we were developing our district LCAP, math was our big need and our big focus goal. And that's not to say there weren't gaps in ELA, and there weren't gaps in subgroups, but that was by far the biggest area. We'd been showing at least growth in, in ELA or maintaining in ELA, but our math gap was huge. So we started with that goal. Obviously, that LCAP never was completed. So the sites have also been looking at that as well, trying to help support us with that math goal. So we asked the sites to focus, to pick particular areas that the site teams, you know, zero in on. So not, not everything is addressed in the SIPSA, as you, as you've noticed. That doesn't mean they're not important. That doesn't mean they, they shouldn't be supported. But the, the state and the county and us as well have been trying to communicate. You know, there may be things you need to focus on that are more, you know, important in the short term, and we let the site teams choose what those things are. So, for example, McDowell, while there's still our gaps in ELA, they've been showing improvement, whereas they haven't in math. So they have a math, a smart, very focused goal in math, and ELA kind of gets swept up in another goal, but it's not explicit, like you're saying. So, I mean, that's, that's what I shared the other day in the email, and that's the guidance we've been sharing with schools.
I saw from McDowell, like, but they did reflect that in their goals, and they also wanted to add counseling as well. But then there's like other schools that have these gaps. It's not addressed at all. So, and I understand, like, being targeted, but I'm also concerned that these kids are going, are going to continue to fall behind, especially since I keep seeing the same subgroups over and over again are falling further below.
Yeah. Yep. And it wasn't really clear how they, in a lot of those, how those focus goals were going to be addressed.
Right. Is that required to have them, to have, like, you know, you know, strategies listed in this, or is it just, these are our general goals?
No, yeah, no, the, the format is a goal followed by, it says activity slash strategy.
Yeah, okay.
That's where they list, you know, what targeted things they're doing and how they're funding it.
I would just add that I think the school site council also has very little money to really be used toward addressing some of these issues because of the way the LCAP is, I know, I, you know, for those of you who have been in education for a while, many of you will know this, we use, school sites used to have academic impact aid, and they used to have SIP money, and they used to have all these categoricals that the school site plans used to comment on how they would address these issues. The problem is, it's all been rolled up into supplemental or concentration grants, which we don't get. So I think, I think part of it is us through the LCAP process really looking at how are we spending our supplemental dollars currently? And is it working? Because it's not like the state's giving us a lot more money to do a lot of additional things. It maybe we have to say, what are we spending our money on right now that's not working to support these achievement gaps? And how do we rethink how we're spending our supplemental dollars? Because I, I really think that's part of the challenge. It's competing dollars. So I can, I, I haven't gone through all the school site plans extensively, clearly, but I just want to say there, there's so little money that the school sites control now. That might be part of, of what their challenge is to.
So another piece.
Hard just to look away when I see these numbers. Like, it's concerning. And you can have four other goals to address things that aren't even listed as a concern in the document. It, it's hard for me to be like, okay, that's okay, but not to address these gaps.
And ELL, the EL gaps are, and special ed are.
Kind of absenteeism in math, like, there's, there's a lot of them.
Yeah, I mean, I, I can definitely share, you know, with our principals, your concerns, especially for groups who have been, you know, multiple years with gaps, and there's no, no clear strategies addressing it. I, I will also add, we're going to be entering a little bit of a data drought. So unfortunately, these results are from two dashboards ago. There's not going to be a dashboard this year. So we're, we're going to have to look for other local measures to assess these things, because we're going to have a, a gap here. There's not going to be anything to base. Like, we set these goals. Some of these, if they're based on the dashboard data, there won't be a measurement to compare of these, you know, any of these two next year.
Looked like one of them was the Healthy Kids Survey, but then there's also like the attendance, right? We take attendance every day, and we see that some kids are chronically absent, or like certain subgroups of kids are chronically absent. So we'll still have those numbers. And then I'm, what's happening with our ELL kids? Like, what? I, I'm just very concerned. And then are some kids being RFEs up too soon? Like,
Yeah, well, especially with our F rate, you know, our failure rate, and how target, how it's swamping our English language learners.
Especially right now.
And kids that are RFEs, are they being given support once they are moved out of the EL program? Do they get support? Because just because they're RFEs doesn't mean they don't need that support, especially in ELA.
I think that, I mean, I think it's great that we're talking about this, because we talk about so many other things other than, you know, really our purpose, why we're here, is ultimately the academic achievement of our kids. The, the EL piece is so problematic, and I will tell you that we, I think we can move this rock, because it's a massive boulder. There's so many issues that, that are tied to it. But what I would say is that to move it in a district with, with as many different school sites as we have, it's going to take a concentrated, focused effort. And many of the, that, that, that is a culture shift for how Pedaluma City Schools operates, school site by school site, because they've been allowed to, to establish some of their own goals. And so, you know, I think we're going to have to come back and look at a study session, particularly if there's a specific area that the board wants to focus in on. We need, will need that kind of support to move that type of initiative, and it's a multi-year initiative to be able to do that. Because, you know, the, the issue why math became a priority that we established for, for this year is that math has typically been neglected, is that when you look at our high school numbers, our secondary school numbers, our ELA performance across the board, regardless of whether they're an English learner or an English-only, our English performance outperforms our math performance significantly. Not coincidentally, it's that way statewide, but, but our gap is even greater. We over, you know, we overperform in English, and we seemingly underperform in mathematics. And so, you know, jumping into mathematics was something that, that we agreed that we were going to take on as an initiative, but I think you're right. Trustee Pahn, that this is, when you look at the, the, the numbers, it's, it's pretty daunting, and, and, and we, we have to be able to keep our eye on this one.
Yes, especially the ELs. I, that was really, when I was looking, when I was reading them today, it was like very disconcerting, really upsetting.
Maybe if I ask this question, Cliff, is what's in the scope of these plans that could address those gaps? And maybe related to that is, what's the consequence for us as a, if we don't improve these, this meeting?
Oh, wow. Well, the, the answer to the first one is, I, I would say, in conjunction with the sites, it's what we do in our LCAP, because that's, to, to what Chris was saying earlier, that's where the majority of the money is that we can earmark to, to support schools. So working, you know, with the LCAP group when we start in January, you know, clearly, this will be a focus area. So it's, it's us working to be able to provide those supports, so the sites can then, you know, implement that and use them. As far as, what was your second question? What are the?
What, what's the, what's the consequence if we don't approve it? Well, is there a consequence to the district if we were to send these back to the school site councils and say, hey, wait a minute, what about these gaps?
So there, you know, there is no deadline. We're not like up against any deadline. Normally, we do these in the spring, towards the end of the year for the next school year, but we push that with all the craziness in the spring. So I mean, the only thing we're running up against is we're in the middle of the school year right now, you know, working on a plan for this school year right now. So the, the more we push it, this becomes a plan that's being put into place with just a few months left of school. So that, that'd be the only thing you're running up against.
And, and if I understood your response to the first part, is that, does that suggest that, you know, the action, the, the real, the way to move the rock, as Gary puts it, is really in the, on the LCAP side of things, not less so on this, on these plans?
Well, I, I would say both. I mean, I think LCAP carries a little more weight and has a little more, you know, money behind it, clearly.
What is, I'm sorry, I'm, I, I am still really unclear of the relationship between these school site plans and the LCAP. Are they there to, you know, deliver the, the goals from the, from the LCAP, or, I mean, I, I understand site independence, but I don't understand the relationship between that site independence and LCAP.
So, so typically, there's, there's some alignment. Sometimes there may be a site-specific need that there's not an LCAP goal that would align with that, but if you noticed on the template, that was one of the pieces for each goal. It asked which LCAP goal this was aligned to, you know, if it was. So they, they typically are, but you might find something very specific that's a niche need that's not in the district LCAP, so there wouldn't be an alignment. But our LCAP goals up until now have been broad goals, I would say, not focus goals. So things like, you know, our first goal was, you know, providing 21st century learning environments and tools, very broad. Classroom and classroom instructional leads and staff. The second one was the academic, you know, preparing students for college and career. Super vague, like, anything and everything, student achievement could fall into that one. So, so, you know, a site could easily align to that with any academic goal. So they, they usually complement each other, but they don't, they don't have to exactly.
And, and correct me if I'm wrong, Cliff, but these plans are addressing more of the federal accounting versus LCAP is state?
LCAP is everything. And then there's, there's an LCAP federal dendum that speaks specifically to title federal money. The LCAP's everything. But yeah, these site plans, originally, these were required for any schools receiving federal funds, and it's kind of morphed into a strategic plan for every school, regardless of if you're directly receiving title funds. Because they are all being supported by Title II to some degree, because we use that for staff development, Title III for EL. So back in the day, technically, this just, just would have been Title I schools, but this is the process we use for every school.
The, Jason, did you want to ask a question?
Yeah, yeah, I had one, one question, because, you know, I appreciate, um, Trustee Pahn, what you're asking about the, the different gaps. What I would be interested in knowing is, is the, the direction that Cliff and I provided to the principals in terms of writing these plans was a shift this year, as you mentioned, to those focus goals. Because in reality, we were looking at, at sites that would have goals like, we'll get better in math and language arts in ELL, like, that's a huge goal. You know, it wasn't clear enough to give the site and the teachers like directions of, of, here's what we're going to do to do that. And so the guidance we got from SCO was, hey, pick two or three focus goals, and then you're also, you're still going to be working on the other things that you're always working on, but these are some areas, strategic areas you want to increase in. And so if the board wants us to make sure that we are, are addressing in a focused way more than two or three goals. In a focused way, more than two or three goals, like I can see easily taking what you're, you're, the board's asking here and asking principals to go back. And make sure that they're lining up to the greatest needs. Um, if you're seeing some gaps as you were looking through the, as board members that maybe. That you're thinking this would be a much greater need than what's on here. We should have them go back and look at that. But if you want more than two or three focus areas, we should probably, we should know that so that we can. Realign how we're directing them, if that makes sense, because we were directing them, like you, you should have two or three focus goals that you can. Move forward on as a site and really make, we wanted to see them make progress and make some concrete steps towards it. So we should. Adjust how we're guiding them if it's not in alignment with what you want.
Jason, I think, I don't think. The issue is that there are too many or too few goals. I think the issue is that we. It wasn't really clear how they were gonna be addressed. And. I mean, at least that was, that's the issue for me. I don't know, um, other board members may feel different. Um, I understand the math goal, um, although I would like to see. A bit, a bigger focus on, on ELs. But it's just, they weren't just, they were just, they weren't real. Informative, I guess. It wasn't clear to me how they were gonna address some of those goals.
I just don't want us to get to the point where we're like, oh. Yeah, these students have always done poorly at school and not. Look at numbers and make goals to address them, like. I think it's Dr. Harrington, I read a quote in the paper from someone a couple of weeks ago that said. Your race, ethnicity, socioeconomic status should not determine how. Poorly you're gonna do on a standardized test. And I feel like that's what I'm seeing here. It's like. On almost every school, cert, like a certain population was failing at every single school. That's not okay. And I feel like, are we to the point where the people who are making up these site committees are like. Not able to see the numbers clearly because they've always seen these same numbers, like.
So it's kind of going right past them.
It, it shouldn't, and I understand what you're saying, it shouldn't, like when we work with them, the first step is to go to the data. And to look at like, where are our biggest deficits? Where is our biggest opportunities to bring kids up? So like what you're describing, trusty pawn, like that's. And the intention is to actually have focus goals that address those most pressing needs. So they should, they should not be, like the way that we were trying to direct them and what you're describing shouldn't be at odds. And so if they are, certainly we need to go back and take a look at that, but they should be congruent.
So why don't we do this? Why don't we? Why don't we pull them for now? And we're gonna, I'm gonna ask you to take the, um, to take this recording, this particular section. And watch it with the principals. They need to understand the context of the conversation. And that's the beauty of, of, that's the one good thing about Zoom. That we have the recording and it, and, and reading the, you know, listening to the context of it and then. We can see what, what next steps would be at that point, if we need to, if we needed to, I mean, at some point. I think we, you know, we're, we're, we, we need to head down a road of a study session, but maybe not quite yet. We might be able to do some more alignment on these and get a little bit more detailed on.
I, I hear the concerns, I just don't, I don't feel like I have enough specificity right now to go back. And tell them what to fix, because I mean, I can tell you. Um, I, I know, I know of a few sites, I shared these concerns with them that this was gonna come up tonight. Who will gladly defend their goals and they feel like they are addressing the greatest needs and the gaps. Um, so. But if we.
We call them out one by. I don't think that's. Each side out one by one, but we can. Maybe they need to get more people on the site. Council that have a different view, because what I'm seeing is concerning. If it's not concerning to them, then I don't really know. I mean, I guess we can. What do you think, y'all?
Well, you know, I, I think, I, I think the goals are one thing. I just don't want them to be boilerplate. I don't want them to just be something that. It feels like this is what they had to do. And so whether they were the two, you know, two, that, the choices were the ones that they really wanted to work on. I didn't feel that there were strategies involved or, or outlined. So maybe it's just a, I don't know. For you guys, but for me, maybe just going back and being more specific about how you have this really good goal. You have these needs. Are the goals addressing the needs and then how are you going to help, even in this, you know, in a short period of time? Um, and it's in distance learning also. Does that make sense? No?
I hear the principal saying too, like we did this thing. We did our goals, we crossed our Ts, we dotted our Is. But we're seeing something else.
Yeah.
There you go. That's exactly.
That's it.
Cliff, maybe some of the specificity, if, if they are, if, if a school site, you know, defends their goals saying. Hey, a, a, addressing these goals will address. Uh, uh, gaps, performance gaps also, maybe that just, that needs to be specified.
Yeah, linking it.
See, I don't, I don't, yeah, I mean, I, I, I guess I'm going back to what Cliff said. That Cliff, I don't think that you have to, I think you have to present to them this, this information, this video. And, and for some of those folks, I think that they can, they can, they may be able to pull some of their plans back. Into a little bit more alignment. For others, they may not be able to, but we'll deal with that issue as it, as it comes. I don't think it's, it, it's our, our job necessarily to fix that. The, the question that's been raised is there's, this is. Is, is there an alignment between the actions? I believe it's a question of the alignment between the actions and the goal.
And the needs.
And the needs.
And the needs.
The identified needs.
And so, so that's where I think that ultimately that's where this is leading towards a study session. Because, and I, I'm assuming that they identified their most pressing needs. And it sounds like the board has other needs that they believe are more pressing. That's gonna require a conversation. People are gonna have to get together to, to, to look at that because I, I, I mean. Well, and the problem is every situation's different, right? Every school site. Is, is kind of a unique situation. But I think to start with. So with. Maybe to help us out, to start with, they would, you would want them to go back to their, their site plan and do what?
I would, oh, you asking Cliff? Sorry.
Oh, no, no, you, I'm asking a board, board members.
I mean, like, I'm looking at one school in particular, right? And they have, um, pulling up. Like the math in the ELL. Just like alarming. But neither one of those is mentioned in their goals. So if you see these type, this type of data and it's not mentioned. Why not? And can you at least give us at least one goal to address this? When I see one school chronic absenteeism is rising for one group of students, but that's not mentioned in their, their goals. Like, why not? Where they have another goal. But there was then really, didn't look like there was a need within the data that was presented. So why did you pick that thing that wasn't even seen as an issue, but not this other thing?
Okay, so it's get, it's getting a little. Little complicated. I mean, the, the plan doesn't say. Why did you choose? Well, it does say, you know, what are the needs? How are you gonna meet those needs? It doesn't say, why didn't you choose these other needs? Um, so it sounds like we're asking them, if they chose not to focus on something. Why didn't they? Right, that sounds like that's a, a, a new kind of thing that we don't.
And you know, it, it, that could just be an exercise for them to go over it again. Why did they choose them? Considering that we're looking at it and bringing something different. You don't necessarily have to.
I think that's a reasonable request, though. I think it's a reasonable request to say, to, to, for, for folks to look at their data. I did it as a principal and say, here were some of the concerns that I, that, that we have. And so that at least you get them all out on the table. And they should be there. So the data that. The data, um, and then here's focus areas and here's why we selected these particular ones. But without listing, I guess the question that's come up is. If there is some, if there's some da- data that, that, that's being mined, that is very troubling. And it doesn't even get referenced, then you don't know if it's even on the radar. The plan doesn't necessarily say that. And so I think that the, it sounds to me like, like what, what board members want to know is. Is that it's on the radar. You know, that here are the, here are the items that are, um. You know, and, and is there an alignment between what the data says and what they're? And what they're, they're putting in their plan. But I still think it'll, I think, I still think there'll probably be more questions that come of this. I think it's ultimately gonna have to, you know, lead to a study session, but I think. Initially, we should bring it back and, and, you know, fill the conversation. You know, and this is very ironic because this is kind of goes back to, you know, we're in a, we're, we're, we're in a book study right now with our. With our administrators and this is the title of the book. Elevating the ascent and the first. Chapter one is the importance of simplicity, clarity and priority. And that's exactly what we're talking about is, is what's clearly, what's, what's really clearly our plan. And it's, and it's okay if at some point if we pivot to, to making, um. Board level priorities, that's totally fine. That hasn't happened here in, in, to my knowledge, in, in many, many, many years. Doesn't mean it doesn't happen all over the place in other districts. And so if we see that there's a priority area. And the reason why I said pushing the rock is. If you're gonna make that type of change, so really meaningful change, it requires everybody lifting that rock. And we all have to move on that thing because there are so many other issues that come up. COVID, other things that, that. Did you kind of take your focus away? You gotta really stay focused in on that. And so we might be able to glean some things from this that are, that are consistent across the board. What we, what we were able to glean and what Cliff and Jason did with. With, um, with the county in the data analysis is we were able to glean that the one, one area that's just stands out for us. Is mathematics. Mathematics is a clear issue across the board. That is, is a really a head scratcher because of when you look at the data, the gap. The data gap for us, and that's across the board in all subject, in all, um, ethnic groups. And subgroups. It's, it's mathematics and, and so it was an easy one to pick as a district initiative. Um, and it's one that you can really, really closely track the data on. And so I know that a lot of them selected the math. Math goals, but, um, we can bring this one back if we want.
Is there a target? Is there a target? I mean, obviously that. There's not a board meeting until January and they're gonna have to reconvene their groups. Are we thinking? Uh, one of the board meetings in February?
I think they need to just do it or get it, get it. I think, I don't wanna put, I would.
Don't wanna put it up.
I think it's more completing the task and getting it done correctly.
Yeah.
So is, um, is what Gary, so this is to the board then, is, is what Gary had mentioned, what, what at this point you're looking for is, is. A relooking at, at the, the focus goals and, um, kind of a summary of, of why, why those choices were made. To make sure that we're addressing why some areas were selected and some areas were not. Is that what, what the board would want for us to, how us to, for us to work with the principals in the near future?
That would be helpful.
Okay. I, I can say, cause Cliff, Cliff and I, the way we did is Cliff focused working with secondary principals and I focused working with elementary principals and I worked with all of them. And some of them I worked extensively with and, you know, actually I got a text from one of the principals who's in this meeting watching saying. These are the best plans we've had in years and I, and, and we called out gaps and strategies that are much, much more specific than they've been in years. So. So it, uh, so just to share with you, like, it'd be good for us to make sure it's lined up, but the process, I think we're on the right track. The principals were feeling like. Oh, we have a plan that actually helps me know how, how to move us, like it lines up what we need to do. So that's a positive. Thing I think out of this planning process that we have is they were feeling better about, in general, better about the plans that they were crafting.
Well, I think one of the better ones, like you're saying, was, uh, was in elementary and like McDowell we talked about. I mean, I'm reading through and I'm seeing like this gap widen, but they addressed that in their goals. They addressed math, English. And then counseling support. So I'm like, oh, they're addressing these things that I was like concerned about. I did not see that. And I mean, I'm sure there's other ones too. But there were some that were not. And I mean, we talked about previously in a board meeting, like having this committee to look at the data and look at. Equity issues. It's like, but we can't be the only ones looking at this. We need the sites to look at them as well. And if you see these types of numbers. Why? Asking the question, why? And not just accepting it and moving along. That's just what I felt like reading some of.
And honestly, I, I think you might be reading a little too much into it by, by thinking that people are just accepting it. Um, you know, there, there are larger things, speaking of pushing the rock. That have been going on and that are going on and they haven't shown all their fruit yet, like. You know, Prop fifty-eight. Um, came through, changed the EL legislation, the EL roadmap came. Where, you know, we're still in the first couple of years of implementing all of those changes and those things will. Be happening over time and you'll see kind of the rising tide and you'll see that. You know, you'll see ELs improve. You know, hopefully as we implement these strategies, but that's definitely not an overnight fix. But you're right, you're still seeing the gaps. So until we actually see data that shows what we're doing is actually having an effect. It may appear like. Nothing's happening, but you know, that's just an example. That's one that's gonna take. Some time and that's really more. You know, more of the meat and more of the money and the resources behind that is an LCAP. Thing than the sites, right? They, they really have a small amount of money to exact, you know, much if any change, so.
I thought San Antonio did a really good job too. Theirs was.
Well, I think like Gary said, just an acknowledgement at least. I don't know. And like you're saying, maybe I am reading more into it. So maybe we need a narrative assumption like Chris makes, like here's the narrative about it.
These are goals, yeah, I mean, I, I, and I would say this, the goals. You know, when you look at gap areas. Gap areas are gap areas. And so when I'm looking at, when I'm looking at something like that. I wouldn't want to see different goals. For. The LCAP or another plan. You, you have to stay focused and you have a couple. Really focused goals and you really are hitting those because it's. You could, there's, there's a limitation to what, you know, what a body could, is able to, to, a body being a group of people. Are gonna be able to achieve if you have too many goals out there. And so what you really try to look for is. Is some consistency in purpose. That people know what they're working on and they're consistent about that. And it's really, really hard. Um, so this is a good opportunity to talk about that. Because the very goals that are in this plan are the very goals that should be seen in an LCAP. They don't have to be identical one for one, but they should be very close. Because you could only do so much, you know, and if you do too much, then you don't, and, and. And if you're successful, if this is the thing that's really critical for us, and this is why this whole concept of this focus, um. Is, is so important. If, if you see gains. And you don't know why you made gains. Then it's for not. That's called being lucky. Difference between being leading and lucky is leading, leading school districts. Understand what works and what doesn't. Lucky school districts. Just gotta, they happen to see a, a gain, but they really don't know if it was this that they did, this that they did it. So you gotta be able to really measure that stuff. And so I think it's a great conversation because I, I, what I, I think the, the general takeaway that I'm hearing. From the questions is we want to see folks a bit more precise in what they do. We want to see more precision with that. And I think that's definitely a really, really good goal. For us to work on a behavior. For us to work on is to be really, really precise on this. And it's something that, um, there's something that, that, um. Other boards have not. Gone down that road in the, the world of, it just hasn't happened in my time here. I've seen it a lot in other boards. And so that's where you guys are, I think, in your evolution. Is you're ready to start tackling some of this stuff and that's a really good thing. I think that's really, really good.
I think, and you know, I, I understand with math being the focus, it just felt like there was. There were some other glaring gaps and deficiencies. there were some other glaring gaps and deficiencies that weren't really addressed. And so, are they being addressed, but just not? I just want to know, are they be, are these things being addressed? Chronic absenteeism is, you know, chronic absenteeism can affect math goals, right? If they're not, they're learning. So it seems to me that some of them could be married a little bit.
I think, I think like they, they are, to your question, Ellen, like they are being addressed. Chris mentioned earlier, like she was wondering like how much of this might be having to do with like fiscal, um, capacities? Sorry.
That's okay.
Um, but I, I, it is a capacity issue. I think it's, but it's more of like, um, like a capa, like what's the capacity of the school to do the work? I don't think like when I was working with schools, it was, it wasn't like that they were focusing goals and that the limit was money. It was how much can you accomplish with the, the time and the, and the, you know, per the, the energy that we have to focus on things. You can't focus on everything or else you're focusing on nothing. So that's really the, the questions that we wrestle with is, is our, our capacity to tackle some of these really challenging things. And, and like, these are hard choices that, that the schools are having to make. And, um, you know, it's, there are no easy answers, right? But they're, they're working, where they're working on, on as much as they can. It's, but I'm hearing that we could go back and, and take another look at, at what was focused on and, and be able to share with the board what the thought process was when, when some things were selected over others, as a starting point at least.
And like Sheldon said, like, what kind of accountability do we have or what is our liability or whatever at some point, if we see this stuff and don't call it out or don't ask why it's not being addressed? Like I can't just look at this and just keep it moving.
Yeah. Can't be perfunctory. I do appreciate what you've said about the need to focus and, and, and that, you know, it allowed the principals and the county and the site people to, you know, really look at their school and really look at how they can address a couple, you know, just certain things instead of everything. So I really appreciate that. I think it's just, you know, I just was looking, I think we're all just kind of looking at it in a different way and that maybe, and, and they're looking at it from a different way. And we need to see the things together. I don't want to take away their work that they did on this. I just think, um, you know, a relook at it would be helpful for everybody.
Yeah, I think that the, 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 the challenge that the principals have, and I'd be remiss if I didn't say this, um, sitting in that seat long, as long as I did, is there's a dynamic that's, that we haven't really talked about. That's I'm sure weighing on them. And that is that, we, we say, and we're not going to have any statewide assessments this year. So the challenge is that in, in very short amount of time, you know how quickly things, things will, will return to normal. Even though it seems like it's going to be forever, it won't be. We're gonna have to do an assessment and see how much loss we had. Where our kids are at. We have to do, we're gonna have to go back and have, we have to have some kind of a baseline assessment of where our kids are at, at a certain point of time. I can't tell you whether that's gonna be August. I can't tell you whether that's gonna be, uh, May, but we're gonna have to do that. And that's, and then we're gonna have to respond to that, right? And that's gonna change everything. Because then those numbers will become, it's like, you know, data is like Chris's budget. Chris's budget is really accurate today. It won't be accurate tomorrow. Our data today will not be accurate once we do that assessment. And then we're gonna have to really be focused in on, you know, um, you know, what to do. Who knows how that's, what that's gonna look like. Maybe we'll be surprised. Maybe our data will come out better than we think, but, but, you know, some of the early, you know, indicators are that some of our, our subgroups that, um, you know, have, have struggled in the, in the, the old model are struggling even more in distance learning. So, you know, our concern is that the data is gonna show a greater gap, which is gonna, you know, create even a greater sense of urgency. And so we can't, you know, as long, I think as long as we keep it on the forefront, I have these conversations, I think we're gonna be in a really good position.
For Cliff. He's like, oh God, she's talking again. Um, so I had a question about Pedaluma. Um, it says five percent of their kids don't have internet access. Is that like, did not have or currently don't have?
That's gotta be old.
Can we follow up? Because.
Yeah, Jason and I were talking about that when we saw that.
Okay.
With, with all the work that tech's done and with the, the hotspots we got and the individual calls, um, that's, that's probably just an oversight, but I'll, we'll, we'll follow up with the principal on that.
I think we're under one percent. Like a half of percent, like, or, or even less. And there's no way it's five percent. I've been tracking that too much.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
It's, 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 and it's related to, you know, situations that you absolutely, they're regional related to the, um, it's the same issue that, that all the school districts are having with our rural areas.
All right, so somebody gonna pull these off the.
The motion. And it would be, ten point three point one through ten point three point twelve.
Okay, I move to table. Um, ten point three point one through ten point three point twelve.
Of the consent, of the consent agenda.
Of the consent agenda.
A witch meeting though.
Do we table it and are we gonna put a timeframe on it?
We have two meetings in January.
Yeah.
Either, I would say either the last.
The second or the, yeah, let's.
Or the first meeting of.
First meeting in February?
Yeah.
Cliff, when do you expect the other schools to have their plans, you know, put together? The ones that aren't represented tonight?
There, there's only one that wasn't represented, Pedaluma High. There's, there's supposed to be finalized on Thursday.
So maybe you can talk to them before Thursday.
Definitely will.
Um, well, tabled until our February, I don't know what the date is, the first meeting in February.
February ninth, February ninth. Do we have a second? All in favor? Okay, um, are we ready to vote on the consent agenda? As it demands? Any other comments, questions? Okay, all in favor of the rest of the consent agenda being passed?
You know.
I'm sorry, I missed that.
Say something?
Me?
Maddie.
Oh, Maddie.
I just wanted to thank you, uh, thank everybody for, um, the agreement on the academic tutors with Sonoma State. I, I just thought that sounded really cool. I'm hoping that it really works. And I also really like this wireless classroom PA systems. So it just seemed like we're, we're addressing some real needs there.
Okay, ready to vote?
Comments further down, so never mind.
All in favor? Closed? Okay, moving on. We are now moving on to action items. And we will open the chat for a few minute, or not a few minutes, maybe a minute. For comments from the public on the, um, the one, two, reaction items that we have. So the chat will be open for what, Gary? About a minute? So it's open if anybody wants to comment on the action items. Doesn't look like there, we have any comments on the action items. I'm closing the chat. Um, and we, we will take them one at a time. The first one, administration, human resources provision, provisional internship permit request for Reina Alar to teach special ed classes for the twenty twenty, twenty, twenty-one school year. And I'm assuming she is in a program to get her credential. She's working towards that.
She'll, the, the point of this is that we, we ran a job search and we didn't have any fully credentialed teachers. They did pick a, um, Ms. Rain Alar, who they're very excited about, um, bringing to, to the campus. Um, she's intern ready, completed all the coursework, and this would allow us to hire her as, on a, on a PIP, a provisional internship permit.
Excellent. I, special ed teachers are few and far between. Kind of a drag, so.
Especially in December.
So I need a motion?
I move to approve.
And a second? All in favor?
Hi.
Hey, next one. Approval of the Pedaluma City Elementary Joint Union High School District Budget Revision Number Two and the First Interim Report for twenty twenty twenty-one. I need a motion?
I move to approve, um, the budget revision number one and first interim report for twenty twenty twenty-one.
Do I have a second? Comments? We've kind of already gone through it. Okay, all in favor? Close? All right.
And thank you again, Chris.
Yeah, that's not an easy job right now.
Very clear too.
Good, my pleasure.
Next one, Resolution twenty twenty-one dash twelve of the Board of Education, the Pedaluma City Elementary and Pedaluma Joint Union High School Districts, of the County of Sonoma, State of California regarding accounting of developer fees for twenty nineteen, twenty fiscal year in the following funder account, capital facilities fund. Can we move that in? And then maybe Chris can explain it a little bit?
Yep.
I move to approve this resolution twenty twenty-one dash twelve.
Check it?
I have a second.
Cool.
So this is a requirement in the law that within six months of the close of the fiscal year, we have to provide all of this annual accounting for both of our districts. Basically, how much do we collect? What do we spend the money on? What is our beginning fund balance? What is our projected any fund balance? And how are we planning to spend the money in the future? The thing to note about developer fees is it's all tied to growth. So there has to be a nexus to growth, which is why you'll see leases on portable classrooms, because of course you don't have portables if, if you have adequate space in your, in your, in your permanent building. So, other than that, I think it's pretty straightforward. I'm happy to answer any questions. I didn't do a PowerPoint or anything.
I think it's pretty clear. Questions, comments before we vote?
Yeah, I just wanted a quick note. I think the, the several of the years are off in the description. The document, you're to be correct, but in the description, some of the years are off.
Okay, I'll, I'll take a look at it. I don't have it. Let me pull it up.
Financial statements were compiled and available for review on November twenty-third, two thousand nineteen. The total amount of interest earned for two thousand eighteen, nineteen, I think that's nineteen, twenty, um, et cetera.
Okay. Fair enough. Well, we'll take a look at it.
All in favor? Okay, one more time, we will be opening up the chat for comments from the public on. There are a couple of different items. One is on COVID nineteen reopening. Um, and then we have some first readings of new courses. And so the chat will be open for about a minute. Well, I thought there'd be tons.
This, this, this one's just the, the one that's here. You'll want to just read it out loud so that we can get it under the record.
From, um, this is from Susan Smith, science teacher at Pedaluma High School. It's looking like we'll be in distance learning for the majority, if not entirety of the second semester. This gives us an unprecedented opportunity to rethink how we do school when we turn to full schedule next August. That should include more built-in supports for EL and SED students. And that was just what we were talking about with the, with the school plans. So thank you for that. And closing the chat, doesn't look like, I'm surprised, but. So Gary, you're leading this discussion.
Well, it's, it's really kind of a, kind of an open discussion for the board about, um, you received the information regarding the, the update from, um, from last week. That's probably has a lot to do with why you don't have a lot of chat on it. And there was a lot in that, um, discussion related to, um, distance learning support. We talked about small cohort work that's going on, extracurricular, co-curricular, hybrid scheduling. There's information on general safety. Learning in, in innovation. Uh, we give a technology update. Talked a little bit about the work that we're doing with inclusivity, uh, equity and diversity with Circle Up. And then of course athletics, which is near and dear to so many, uh, so many hearts out there. So we want to just kind of open it up and have a, um, for the board to ask any questions or to talk with one another regarding, what are your thoughts moving forward? You know, into twenty twenty-one.
What's happening with athletics? Is it?
Right now athletics is on hold. And, um, there's nothing happening with athletics. And it's, it, um, they're gonna relook at things, um, at the start of next, as, as the situation continues to progress around the state.
So they're gonna relook at it in January? So there's nothing, there's no cross, none of, okay, thank you.
Cliff, could you give us an update on the hybrid scheduling, uh, process and, and findings so far?
Yeah, happy to. So, uh, the secondary, we were called the distance learning work group, but now obviously that's hybrid too. So we, we've met, uh, twice a week for a number of weeks, starting a couple of weeks before Thanksgiving. And, um, put everything back on the table. Uh, we, we followed the parameters the district gave us, um, at one of the last board meetings, asking us to focus on the physical safety of students and staff, uh, the educational quality of the program, including, you know, equity and access, and considering the social emotional wellbeing of students and staff. So we, we took a look at the different schedules we had. So we had a six period, we were looking at six period options, three period options, two period options and one period options. Um, following our model of three cohorts. So we divided the school into thirds. Every class is divided into three teams. Um, which is, which is smaller than what most districts are doing. Most districts are doing two cohorts. Um, so we used that guidance. We looked at eight different iterations of those schedules. Uh, three, six period options, two, three period options, two, two period options and one, one period option. We weighed them on those parameters and ultimately narrowed it down to three top choices. Uh, there's two, three period models and one six period model that we're looking at more closely. Uh, we started to develop, uh, potential bell schedules just to kind of see how things play out. You know, if there's issues that arise and, um, so that's where we're at now. We've developed, bell schedules for both the three period models to date. Uh, we're gonna reconvene in January and look at the six period model, which is one of the ones we developed in the summer. That was the original proposal. So, um, that's where we're at now, hoping to, to narrow things down. Um, and then at some point, when. Um, and then at some point when we are in the red and at some point when we are able to meet in person. Um, you know, we'll have a plan ready to go. Um, but um, it's complicated. With secondary, there's just so many moving parts. Um, and then we know we're gonna need to, to resurvey families once we have a plan to share out what that plan is and see how many folks plan on staying in distance learning, if they so choose, how many plan on sending their kids back and so just trying to balance all of that with, with cleaning, with social distancing, with supervision. With taking temperatures, just all that fun stuff, but we, we've made some headway and so we're now, we're, we've narrowed it down to three and that's what we're looking at now, three options.
And could you describe for us uh, that process of narrowing it down from eight to three, maybe two?
Yeah, so we, we divided, uh, we divided our working group into five or six groups. And we had them use a Google form to rate all eight of the schedules on a scale of one to ten for physical safety, from least safe to the most safe. From one to ten, as far as um, social emotional health, ten being the schedule would provide, you know, the best social emotional health for students. And then also one to ten on educational quality of, of instruction, equity and access. So we had them do that as groups, just to kind of see where people were at. Um, clearly, the one period at a time option was the safest. Cause you're only mixing with one group of kids ever, and teachers mix with three. Um, the six period option was the least safe, cause you're mixing with six different periods, six different groups of kids. The teachers are mixing with fifteen. Um, but then, you know, we waited on safety and those other parameters as well, so. Just, we just did that as a group, just to kind of get a feel and a litmus test on where we were at. The following meeting, after we reviewed those results, we had everyone on the committee vote for their top three. And so we had all eight options still on the table, so taking all the information to date. We had them vote and um, the top, uh, the one with the most first choice votes was a three period schedule. The one with the most second choice was another three period schedule. Um, and then the one, I think with the third, was a six period schedule. And then if you add all those up, there was two, three period schedules and, and one six period schedule that were clearly the top three. Um, so those are the ones we've been focusing on now. We haven't narrowed it down further. Since, since we're down to three.
You know, Cliff, you mentioned surveying um, students about would they, how many would be willing to come back to hybrid and how many was, what about um, faculty and staff?
Yeah, so, so yeah, Matthew's been meeting with, with folks for quite a while. Um, that, I'm sure that may change. Once we eventually get to hybrid, there may be uh, another need to kind of put that out there again to see um, if there's staff who you know, have concerns about returning to get an updated number.
Okay, thanks.
I met with probably thirty or forty people, at, I think at least thirty or forty people in um, August, right before school started, kind of in anticipation of this. So we have a pretty good idea of what we're looking at. And obviously, when we, when we have a plan and a model coming, we're coming back. Well, I'll ask again to see who's, who has, you know, concerns and wants to do a one-on-one meeting.
What does it look like? I mean, from what you've been hearing and talking to people about teachers returning?
There's a, there's a good number of thirty, forty teachers who are very concerned about coming back. Um, you know, unless, I think if having a vaccine would definitely change the, change the scene, so.
Thanks. Other comments, questions?
Um, I'm trying to remember um, Gary, the, um, in the the message that went out. You know, how we're gonna stagger. Was it specific as to how we're gonna stagger the opening once we get to red? Or was it just that we will?
We didn't, yeah.
It, it was just that we will probably have a tiered or staggered. And that we will try to have supports for English language learners and special ed and other you know, at-risk groups. Even if we're in purple.
Right. We did that.
No, 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 that's, I just was wondering how specific we have been with our plan so far.
What we didn't, what we did not include in our, um, in the correspondence are the two questions the board's gonna have to wrestle with. One is, um, what are the metrics that are gonna be, that the, we're gonna use to determine um, when to return? And when we return, are we returning as one group? Are we turning as a, in a stagger? Um, our recommendation was that um, we do some element of a, some element of a stagger. Um, it doesn't have to be a drawn, long drawn out stagger, but something um, related to that, because it'll be easier to deploy that um, back. And then a determination of some type of a, um, of a metric for, for returning. So that, um, teachers ask, parents ask, community members ask. Um, again, it's, you know, it's, it's not, that's not necessarily a, a date. But it's okay if these conditions are met. After these conditions have been met for so long, up to a certain period of time, period of time to be determined. Um, we will, um, we, we would be looking towards reopening at a particular, on this particular the, the following week or so on, because we, we, what we've shared with the board previously is we do need, um, you know, three, four weeks to be able to really plan that type of a transition. Um, to be able to do that. It'll take that, that type amount of time.
And once we're into the red tier and we've started back hybrid. Do we still need to have all those protocols in place? Uh, temperature taking, you know, all that kind of stuff, cause when I, when I went, I went to Cherry Valley today and, and Valley Vista, um, the other day. And just the amount of effort it went in to having forty-eight kids at that school um, was phenomenal, you know, and, and so coming, bringing even more kids back, we're gonna need that, we're gonna need time to set it all up.
So what happens is, we're lucky because um, Liz did a lot of work in this particular area as far as developing a district operations plan. So we'll be able to poach a lot of that information, but each school site will be required for having a site-specific protection plan that they have to have in place. And it gets down to real detail, like where, you know, um, as an example, um, you know, uh, you know, ingress egress to, to, you know, if you're quarantining, you know, an individual, where would you quarantine them very specifically? And so what's happened with that is, um, Sonoma County Department of Health developed a template. But the template they developed was for businesses. And so, um, the county, we asked them to, uh, would they be willing to develop a specific template for schools? And they're working on a template right now. So we're waiting for that template. Mo, most of that template will be able to take to, to move information that we've already created. So that it, that's not a lengthy amount of time to develop that. That plan can be done in a week, easy. Um, and we have all of the pieces to be able to do that, but we do have to have a plan. That plan, operational plan for each one of those school sites. You know, other than that, um, we've, we've kind of all lined up the testing schedules. You know, we've, we've started with, we, you know, identifying a, a, a vendor and we'll be working on completing training on that particular, with that particular vendor site. Um, our vendor, um, which will be doing that. We've, we've, we've land, landed up, landed on a particular schedule. So that, so that our staff, which are going to be required to be periodically tested, um, will be able to do that easily and, and um, make it as convenient as possible to do. It's a saliva-based test. It's quite, it's as simple as swab fifteen twenty seconds, swab fifteen twenty seconds, put in a bag, seal it and drop it.
That goes up your nose into your brain?
Yeah, and you, and you get your results back, um, fairly quickly directly to you. Um, so that, that's gonna be a, a fairly simple process. Person that, the, the group that we, we, we are going with, Curative, um, does, does, is a, a massive tester in the, in the country. They, they, they do all the Department of Defense testing and a lot of the government testing. They have a, a lab in DC. They have a lab in, in, in California and a lab some, I think Florida. And so, um, what, what we like about it is the turnaround is very quick.
Yeah.
We hired a COVID nineteen coordinator yet?
Uh, well, that's a good question. I, I'll defer that to.
We, we did our interviews today and it's pending reference texts.
Oh, cool. So you have.
We have someone in mind.
That's a huge piece, is having someone.
Yeah, we're excited.
Good.
Um, so those pieces, the operate, that type of thing, a lot of it is gonna be the, 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 the crux of the work is going to be um, about, alright, who's coming back? Who's not? And what are the implications for that? There's hiring that'll need to be done. It's not going to be um, related to PPE. It's not gonna be related to testing. It's not gonna be related to those types of things, because, um, you know, Chris is, and well, the whole team, but a lot of it's been Chris. They, they've, they've put those pieces in place. So those will be, you know, it's, it's things that are, that we can rapidly deploy. Um, but the question's gonna be related to scheduling, you know, related to undo, cause we're, cause, cause you remember, we're, we're if, if, if students end up coming back, whether that's March or, or for May, you know. Um, you're undoing a lot of things, because some schools and students are gonna say, I don't want to be doing this particular schedule. I want to get back to my school site. They may be on independent study. And they want to get back to a regular school site. And you can't deny them the ability to be able to do that.
Right.
So it takes a little bit of time. It's, you know, we want to give the counselors enough time to be successful, um, as well.
So how much time are you, four weeks, six?
I think it's gonna be about four weeks.
Four weeks?
Yeah.
Say, like, once we're in the red, we can look at a hybrid schedule in, within a month? Would that be enough time?
Uh, well, we would have to be in the red for at least, um, well, we have to be in the red for at least two weeks before we could even have, start having that, those conversations.
Oh, really?
Yes, we have to be, that's, that's, that's a requirement. And so, um, I could tell you that Hills, Hillsburg's looking at at six weeks in the, six weeks in the red and the seventh week, starting, starting back up at the seventh week. Which could very well be in the orange at that point.
To be fabulous.
That would be nice.
But we'll have to, well, you know, uh, regardless of, uh, you know, it would be great if we, if we could get some direction. You know, in, in January, because um, we have to negotiate on working conditions.
I, I think, uh, I, I think the, the board is gonna lean on your recommendation there in terms of how much time you think you need to line up the personnel, line up logistics, line up the schedules. Um, but what I'm hearing you say is four weeks after two weeks in the red.
Assuming that you are not backpedaling.
Right, right.
Let's hope we don't. Any other questions or comments on this?
Yeah, I, I just want to acknowledge the, the work of the Distance Learning slash Hybrid Committee and Cliff and Jason's leadership and understand Chris was a part of the, you know, this planning too. I know we asked a heavy lift, uh, to, you know, go back and revisit all our options. I still think that's what we needed to do, just to make sure we're thinking through all those things and to and to make sure we're making the right choice and, and can articulate to the public why we're making the choice that we're making. So I, I just want to say thank you to, um, all the teachers and staff and administrators who are a part of thinking through all those options.
I echo that. It's been, you guys have, you're, you've been amazing. And that all the teachers that are putting in all that time and effort, it's impressive.
I agree.
Okay, let's go on to first reading of new course revision, Practical Math at Casa Grande. Any comments about that? Pretty cut and dried, I thought.
Yeah, so we're, so you know, students who are at STC level, you know, are, are at varying you know, levels in mathematics, but we've only ever had one math course. So, um, the teachers developed a second math course, so you're gonna see both of these. We currently have on the books. Um, a course called Math Review, Algebra Academy. So we're, we're gonna revise those and have clear, our clear two levels of STC math.
Oh.
Yeah, cause that's, the second one is also the Course Revision Math Foundations. They sound, it sounds good, actually.
I know. I thought I should take it.
Me too. Well, it's, it's very practical math, is what it looked like. Um, and then the First Reading of New Course Proposal, Introduction to Chicano Studies. I want to take that class. That sounds awesome.
Yeah, San Antonio's been working on that. They've been, they have a percentage of, uh, of Latino students, so they, they've thought, um, you know, what, what a great way to get students interested in not only satisfying the US history requirement, but do it kind of in a thematic approach with, you know, with their heritage, so.
I love it.
On this for a while.
Um, a bunch of us are definitely gonna be auditing that class.
Is there a reason it's not A through G? Because it looks so thorough.
Yeah, it looks like it should be, or could.
Yeah, good question. Um, you know, not, not a lot of our classes at San Antonio are A through G, just, just because of.
In lieu of, um, US history, which is the is a prescribed course for juniors. Um, shouldn't it be A through G? Uh, is, is the American history, US history, A through G at San Antonio?
No.
Oh, it isn't?
Not, not all of their courses are A through G. There's a few. Yeah, go ahead.
No, I was just gonna say, just because, like, again, back to the dashboard, showing that they are below on college and career readiness. I know that's for a number of factors, but, um, I don't know, you know, give them maybe some more opportunities, just something, I don't know, something to consider. But I was just wondering, um, why it was not, cause again, it looks like an amazing class.
Yeah. So, and they, did they like create, this is something that they've created themselves, right?
Yeah, and or big part is sealed from others, you know.
Well, yeah, yeah, but I mean, it's not like, uh, it's not like a state, um, course. They kind of pulled down. They, they kind of pulled together and figured out how to do it themselves, right?
No, the state still has like no agreed-upon ethnic studies curriculum, because no one can agree on who counts as a person of color.
Yeah, yeah.
I also, what impressed me the most about it is, is they looked at who their students and what their student needs were and came up with this course and I mean, I that's just really interesting.
What the fuck are you doing?
So kud, kudos to me, to San Antonio for that course. Any other comments? Future business.
Of, um, facilities update that's gonna take place. That's kind of a stated a union uh, for facilities. Chris is gonna be leading us through at the January, January board meeting. Um, you know, I'll say beforehand, kudos to Chris and the team for, um, making, when it comes to facilities, making lemonade out of lemons. The fact that we, we've been able to get as much work done that you're gonna hear about on the twelfth that, um, that we would never have been able to do during the school year. Um, uh, it's made, it's gonna make it better for the kids when they come back and there'll be less disruptions in the next few years because of all the work that we've been doing so far. So she's gonna do an update on that. And then we have a, a, we'll do an update. Cliff will be, will. And then we have a, we'll do an update. Cliff will be, will give you the most recent update or latest update as of the, the twenty-sixth of January on ethnic studies.
Yeah, I'd like to put on the, on the future radar, Gary's idea of a study session sometime in the spring. And, and I want to put some flesh on that idea sometime. I, I think so far what we've been describing would be the contents or the theme of that study session revolves around achievement gaps, diversity, equity, inclusion. And I would, I want to add to that, related to achievements and achievement gaps. Mitigation of learning losses during this pandemic, you know, as we are starting to anticipate an end to this thing. Somehow we're going to have a generation of children that we need to, you know, get up spade for losses during the pandemic. And so I think that could be a part of it, as a part of the theme of educational equity and achievement. And then one more thing I would add to that, that session. I would love this district to open a conversation on dual immersion education. Particularly with the, the demographic, ethnic demographic that we have in Headluma and the success stories we've seen in our own town in Old Adobe. And, and the unique problems we have with our, our achievement gaps, particularly on racial lines or ethnic lines. I think that, I think that could be, could hit a lot of those issues at once in a really positive way. At least that's been my experience. I sent both my kids to dual immersion at Old Adobe. And, and I think it's something that is worth at least discussing in Headluma City Schools.
So. What's that?
I think we should do that study session in March.
Which one?
I don't know, but we should have a lot of data as far as learning.
Usually we only have one in March anyway because of spring break, right?
This is going to be a study session.
Okay.
A separate one.
Study session is going to probably be better in April because of the break. It creates some problems for us. But we could do the dual immersion in March, start that conversation.
At a board meeting?
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, the study session I think should be the, I think, I think we probably want to put the study session for a discussion item to flesh out some more details before we get to. So we can do, we can put the study session on for February for a discussion.
Okay.
We can discuss it tentatively for something like on April.
Yeah.
And then we can bring the dual immersion in March for, for a further discussion, if that works.
Grades, we'll get grades for the second.
Yeah, we'll have a little bit more data then. We'll also have, you know, those, you're right, Maddie. So I'll talk to Michelle about getting dual immersion in, in February. I mean, and, and or March, and then we'll, or February doing our study session discussion, and then March we'll do dual immersion with.
But the dual immersion, could we do a presentation? So we have someone who can, I know Sheldon could probably talk about it at length, but maybe a teacher or, you know, that could give us some data and infor, information that way?
Sure. I mean, I mean, we could, I think we could probably do the presentation internally. I mean, it's, there's a variety of different dual immersion pro, we can go through that process. I mean, I'm probably as familiar with dual immersion as anybody else in this area.
Okay, good, good, good. Sounds great.
I, I have something. Just to throw a little bit more onto your plate, Gary, and the rest of you wonderful people. At, at the CSBA convention, they had a wonderful presentation on climate and the climate action. And they had two students from two different school, high schools who had, who had, you know, basically taken their sites and created this action plan. And so it was very much student-driven. But in any case, I, I, you know, I know we have a resolution and we kind of repassed it about a year ago. But I'd really like us, whether it's a study session and a discussion, to kind of look at it again and put some teeth in it. It's pretty generalized. It's, it doesn't have any action items in it. It doesn't have any, any kind of, I don't think it has anything about students and their actions and creating the plan. So anyway, it's just something to put on our plate at some point. I, 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 I think it's so important and these kids are so, so many of our students are really, you know, concerned about it. I think it, it's part of the reason we have seventy-one percent of the kids in our county that don't feel they have much of a future. I think it feeds into it a little bit because, you know, fires, floods, you know, that kind of thing. So anyway, I just wanted to mention that as a future.
We'll have some more information coming forward on some of the things that we're doing specifically to assist with our, our own carbon footprint.
Yeah.
Chris has been working very closely with Terra Verity. We won't go through in the details right now, but you know, we have a long way to go. There is no doubt about it. We've, having said that, I'm, I'm proud to say that we're, we are considered the greenest district in all of Sonoma County by far. Because of our, we are the only district that has almost a complete network of, of solar.
That's great.
And so.
Well, when I was listening to the, to the workshop, it, it really sounded like we were definitely doing a lot of the things that a lot of districts had, are just starting. So thank you. I just, it was just so inspiring and I thought we should do this.
Thank you, Maddie.
So we, we have a, I just remind you, Ellen, we, we, we do have to adjourn to closed session. We have two items that we, we need to do just for the public to know that these are just student cases. This is not anything related to any, any, anything else. We just need to, to be able to, to, to deal with. We have a case forty-eight, nine, four, seven, and four, eight, four, nine, seven, and a case four, nine, three, five, three. And we just need to get back so we can do that, so that we can move forward with our students, okay?
We're adjourning to closed session.
Thank you, guys. Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for coming.
Yeah. Back to report on action taken in closed session. And Gary will take it away. He's not here yet. Gary, are you here?
I'll check on him. Oh, there he is.
Okay, good.
Okay, we, Ellen, you want to re, reopen the meeting?
Oh, yes. Sorry. I'm opening the Board of Education regular meeting to report on action taken in closed session.
So the board voted in closed session on, to, in closed session to approve two cases. One case dash, one dash, four, eight, four, nine, seven, and the other case, two dash, four, three, nine, five, three. Both were by majority vote. Five zero.
Thank you. And on that note.
Have a wonderful holiday. You guys have earned it.
Holiday is not you.
Too bad we can't go out and.
You know.
And celebrate at home on Zoom like we have for nine months now.
With new puppies, right?
Yeah, one new puppy who you all see for another like twelve months.
Just so that you know, we're dealing with a, we are dealing with a COVID positive case right now in the district. It's without getting into a lot of specifics, as a staff member that this is, it was not in contracted here in the district. It was contracted while on vacation. But we have three, four staff members that were in close contact for quite some time during the period of, of, of being contagious. One of them I'm looking at in my top right corner, Mr. Harris. And so we're, we're being very, you know, we're, we're on a reduced duty load. And staff is adjusting accordingly, so.
What's that?
Have you been tested?
Not yet.
Not yet. He has to wait so that he can get an accurate test. You, you give it a couple of days.
Were any of the people, any of the staff members involved in the cohorts?
No, we, we've had cohorts issues, but the, no, not in this one.
Gary, Gary suggested, Gary's, Gary's talking about at the district office.
This is just your office.
We're, we're getting, we're getting, you know, from cohorts to other staff members. I'm getting multiple calls a day. I mean, I, I dealt with one during the board meeting. I'm, they're, they're coming in.
Yeah, it's closing around us. It really is. I don't know what, what it is like for you. I mean, for me, it's, it's closing big time. Like my, my, my whole neighborhood has been very careful and it's, I've got three neighbors around me that are positive right now and a close friend of mine, I mean, it's all just kind of, it's kind of, I, I'm sure you're, you're sensing the same thing. You have to.
Well, his whole family is positive.
Whose is?
My brother and his family, all four of them.
Oh, no.
Cliff's family is the same way. Brothers, brother-in-law is, the whole family. There's just a lot of.
My brother's family was too.
Yeah, so.
I'm hoping, I'm hoping we had, we had someone positive in the office.
Okay, thanks, guys.
Meeting adjourned.
Thank you.
Everybody stays well and.
Happy holidays. Take care. All the other ones.
Stay safe. Yeah.